Started. We are live. All you people on TV, hold on one second. All right. Welcome to the January 24, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Next, citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. In addition, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you, City Clerk. I see no minutes to be approved. Correct? City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Staff would like to go ahead under Presentations and add another three presentations for this evening, if that's okay? Onto your first agenda item, Boards and Commissions. The Historic Preservation Board will be presented by Ms. Toni Shiflo.
Hello, Ms. Shiflo.
I love the People's podium. Thanks to me. Well, I'm here with the Historic Preservation Board's Semiannual Report. We had a busy last half of last year. We recommended council approve the house at 4050 Coquina Avenue for a local history designation, and we got to send the request to the Historic Preservation Officer. It passed, and this property will hereafter be known as the Liberty House. Late July, we sent a board member, me, to the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation Conference held in the land, where we accepted the Best of Communications Media Award for our Explore Historic Titusville booklet, website, and phone app. This project has been so popular with the public, we renewed the website with our host for two years and reprinted 1,000 copies of the booklet. In September, the paint controversy began, when new owners of a designated historic structure wanted to paint a large old building a new color shade not appropriate for the historic period represented by the building. After our Historic Preservation Officer suggested a more historic color palette, the owners appealed, and again, the Historic Preservation Board asked them to change, to choose from the relevant paint colors. They appealed again, leading to a hearing with council. By a three to two vote, council upheld the decision, holding the owners to suitable colors and validating the recommendation of one of your advisory boards. The building has since been painted appropriate colors and is lovely to look at. I urge you all, try, try it. Unfortunately, the paint controversy was compounded when in November, the owner of several historic buildings in the downtown CRA came before us to appeal the painting of one of his contributing historic buildings without following the process of getting a certificate of approval. The paint is not quite a historic palette color, but it is in the CRA color palette. But the certificate of approval would have caught that, and we would have followed the process. While ignorance is no excuse of the law, we allowed the color to remain, thus causing the new owners of the other building to complain we were not being fair. So, as we saw with the council vote, not everyone understands the process and reasoning behind regulations concerning historic structures. Therefore, a project we began earlier rushed forward in the last half of the year, using a Florida Department of Historical Resources small matching grant with an expert consultant firm, we're creating an architectural design guideline for historic and potential historic structures in our city. Now, these guidelines will spell out the various historic styles found in Titusville and link specific requirements to each style, and then we'll make these available to the public. So, your Historic Preservation Board continues to encourage the preservation of historic buildings in the city by working on strategies to motivate property owners to participate in listing their historic buildings on the city's local historic register, and we're trying to educate the public, city government, and property owners about the requirements to maintain the historical integrity of their buildings. I want to thank you for your continued support, and I think you can trust that I'm not going to come to you wanting to paint the historic Norwood House purple with pink stripes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. City Manager?
Onto Item 6B, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission's Semiannual Report. It's included in your agenda packet, and it'll be as written. No action required. Item 6C, the Titusville Environmental Commission's Semiannual Report will be presented.
I'm not going to be as graceful as Toni was, because I'm just not going to be. That was great. Hi, my name is Yvette Fliss. I'm representing the Titusville Environmental Commission to tell you what we did the last half a year. We, we recommended the removal of Wild Date Palm as a canopy tree by amending the city's Land Development Regulations sections in the technical manual, and we updated the lists to make things go more native, basically. Also hoping to use, recommend that the, the plants and trees that are in the lists are better suited for the areas where they're going to be. We also recommended that grasses, we came up with a bunch of tolerant, drought-tolerant grasses for, for consideration, and we, we thought that you guys would really appreciate using Florida Native Plant Society-approved lists of grasses and natural turfs, because we wanted to keep herbicides and fertilizers out of the drinking water supply, but also out of the Indian River Lagoon, and you guys unanimously voted that down. But we tried. We also recommended that the City Council request, put in a request for a proposal to establish a stormwater monitoring program with a $50,000 budget, and because the Indian River Lagoon needs to be restored, the city of Titusville has 18 outfalls that discharge straight into the Indian River Lagoon. It's important for the health and welfare of our city and our citizens to know and understand how outfalls affect the Indian River Lagoon, so that we can take corrective measures. You guys have this in your bundle, but we're hoping, we, you guys have not finished deciding on that, but we recommended that you do that. We also have been working on an urban forestry program, and part of that is, for the urban forestry program concept, is that you guys hire a dedicated city arborist specifically to take care of the trees, and also so that we can continue to be a Tree City, which is something we all like. And we've also decided that October every year will be the Tree Month. We will do our Tree City USA recertification duties during October, and that's what we did.
Thank you very much. Well presented. City Manager?
Item D is the Titusville Flag and Memorial Committee. Their Semiannual Report is written in your packet, and no action is required. Next item is the Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee. Mayor Diesel has designated Thomas Al Taylor as the Chair, and Barry Russell from the Grove Church is the clergy representative for the Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee. City Council is being requested to confirm these appointments.
Any question or comment? Certainly Barry Russell's done this for us for several years. He's a pastor at the Grove. He played football for me at Titusville High School. I'm very proud of that young man, and if you ask him to do something, he's going to get it done. And we moved on from Herman Cole for obvious reasons, and my new request was to Al Taylor, who has been on and is still on many boards for this city, and very involved in the Chamber of Commerce, and certainly a young man that will take his responsibility and do it well. So those are my two guys. Before we go any further on that, do we have any cards on that?
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
Imagine that.
Stan Johnston. Brad Russell is a fine person. I've known him for years. He's good. He was a neighbor of mine for a while, and he married someone who went to church with us for a while. Okay. What I wanted to mention, though, is we ought to be careful, because in the past, there's some mistakes have been made. Pulitzer Peace Prize, gave it to Nixon. Nixon, I mean, I'm not sure how that would happen, but, but we had over 2 million people murdered in the, or killed in Vietnam War. That's, I'm not, I'm talking about Pol Pot and so forth, and we only had about 55,000, but more are being killed now by Agent Orange. But so, and then there was Colonel Titus. It's questionable about how well Colonel Titus should be recognized, considering his involvement in racism, big time, what I, what do I read? We also have a chemist. I don't remember his name right now, but he was responsible for millions of being murdered by a different.
Stop the clock. I just have to ask.
That's all.
I was going to say, what the heck's that got to do with Al Taylor and Barry Russell?
Well, it's got to do with, 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 with what's going to be chosen, that's all.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Can I have a motion?
Move to authorize you to appoint the Chairperson and clergy representative for the 2023 Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
I'll second that.
Second from former member, Member, Member Cole. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you. Great, great group, and I appreciate them serving. Neither one are here tonight, I don't think, but outstanding young men.
On to Item 6F, which is the North Brevard Economic Development Zone Dependent Special District Board. Accept the resignation of Member Al Matroni from the North Brevard Economic Development Zone Independent Special District. The resignation was effective January 1, 2023. You have two applications on file. Edna Wilson and Patricia Brown, or Barnes, excuse me, have both, both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as a special council appointee with an unexpired term to expire on 31 December 2025. Today, we received an additional application from Mr. Nathan Slusher. I believe the clerk has that, because it was not timely. Five days ago is when it closed. If you would like to consider that application as part of the other two, you'll have to table the item and bring it back at the next meeting.
I will hear counsel on that. My first thought is, we have two very qualified candidates, actually, and I know Nathan. Nathan certainly is passionate about what he does, and I appreciate him, but I will step back and hear what counsel's thoughts are on that. I'm fine, either way. Member Nelson?
I would agree with you. We have two very, very qualified applicants. I will say Jennifer Taylor I spoke to, and she had her application last time. They are caring for a family member currently. She does want us not to forget her next time, but right now, we have two super women. So, I would say go forth.
Okay. Member Nelson is feeling like go forth. Member Robinson?
Is there, my, my concern, is there a time limit on when the applications are supposed to be in?
Yes, sir. It's five days before the meeting itself.
Five days before the meeting?
Yes, sir.
In that case, my thoughts is that you go forth. Was the, the new application put in within FYD?
The new applicant that you have that was not in the published agenda, we received it today.
Okay. Member Stokoe?
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with going forward. My only question would be just to, if we could clarify and publicly state how these positions are advertised, so should somebody in the future want to meet the deadline, they know exactly where to go and look for that information?
City Manager?
I'll let the City Clerk answer that question.
And City Clerk?
Sure. Each and every, each and every month, our, our staff posts the notice of what vacancies are coming up for six months ahead, and they carry that for month-to-month as we get closer, you know, month five, month four, month three. And then, of course, vacancies, we pop them on that notice, you know, as soon as they happen, or the month-to-month procedure, and, and we publish that on social media, we put it out on the, of course, the notice boards, website, the, the major ones.
All right. Mrs. Slusher, you want to say anything up here? Come on up.
Good evening, Nathan Slusher, for the record, at 860 Allendale Street. And yes, I absolutely turned it in today. I have been working to try and get on the North Brevard Economic Zone for a very specific reason. In 2011, INBeZ was created for job facilitation due to NASA shutting down. Ever since, we've had an explosion of growth, that job facilitation has happened, right? And we're still using INBeZ to bring in more jobs, like we had Darkstorm last year. However, in 2023, we currently have more jobs than we do human beings. So I would like to see that board turn more towards the economic development side of it through small business growth. What I'd like to see is if we can create business opportunities, or whether it be through abatements or whatever other programs they have, that are specific to help small businesses, like haircutteries, or produce stands, or restaurants, little ones, grill startup, because I want to see the 99% of businesses that are small in America, that's what I want to see grow. So I'm very specific as to what I'm looking for when I apply for this board, it's because I want to work with that. I, like I said, I've been trying to do it through county, and then when the agenda popped up, I was like, oh, somebody resigned, which congratulations to whoever retired. Good, that's awesome. But as soon as I saw it, I contacted the City Clerk and asked if I could put my application in, because like I said, I've applied through county, and I'm waiting to find out for that, and I'm trying to get on that board. So, it is very specific what I was looking for.
I would say, to that point, you certainly are welcome to attend their certainly open public meetings. I don't know if they line up with your work schedule, I get that. But I would say, without getting great detail, I do get to sit there as a liaison for Titusville, I'm not a board member or a voter or anything like that, but there is an awful lot of discussion and effort to work with the small businesses. I have one specific, is it Heroes Sub? Heroes on South Street. I won't, I won't get into the specifics, because I know I'll mess them up, but they, they did something with that owner there to edify their business, and they're always looking for small businesses, and the small businesses sometimes come in and say, hey, we want to do this, can we redevelop this, or whatever. So they, they do that a lot, and again, I don't think it'd be a bad idea for you to come in and say what you said right now, but there is a lot of that going on, and when I got there, I didn't know that either.
No, please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying they're not.
No, 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 no. No, no.
I, I have a meeting with Mr. Troy scheduled, so I can learn what the procedures are, what's going on, but being in the small business world, that's specifically why I want, why I want to sit on that board, is to aim it towards small businesses.
All right, but thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Certainly, I don't think we, maybe we do, I don't think we need a vote on moving forward with what we have. So I think the consensus is that we move forward with the applicants that we have. So with that in mind, I'd need to hear nominations or discussion on the two.
Well.
Member Nelson?
My thought is, we turn around, accept the resignation of Al Matroni, effective January 1, 2023, with regrets. I think that's probably the first step, and then see if there are people here who want to speak. I know Pat Barnes is not here, she had another meeting. I did tell her that I.
I don't see that. No.
Nobody's, neither are here? Okay. Well, let's, let's accept the resignation of Al Matroni first.
All right. So with that, let's take a, a motion on that.
That's the motion.
Member Nelson just made that motion. And Member Cole?
Second.
Member Cole's the second on that, to accept the resignation. I don't mess that name up. Matroni? Anyway, let's have a roll call vote on this one.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
I will say yes, and I just want to add, I've been blessed to sit next to him while I've been there, and very informed young, a young man, experienced man, who has added a lot, and he's, again, one of those guys that wants to say, does it benefit Titusville? And I hear that a lot at those meetings. So, yes, I accept with regrets.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now we move on to the nominations of the next one, the replacement. Member Nelson?
I read both of the applications, and my suggestion is going to be, my nomination would be for Pat Barnes. She has spent 56 years in this town. She started a small business when she was 21, basically helping different small entities do their financial reports. She is currently with her husband, running a multimillion-dollar business, and she is a Titusville native. She graduated from Titusville High School. I think she has the business experience that we would really like to have, and in addition, she runs a nonprofit for kids. So that would be my suggestion.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to add anything there? Member Stokoe?
I looked at both applications. I will say, I am happy with either candidate. I don't know Pat Barnes as well as I know Edna Wilson. She's been here, I think, 42 years now, very, very involved in the community, did some work in nonprofit. Her husband had a small business, I don't know if he still has it. She's active in the chamber, and now with real estate, and I just think she's very diverse. I do know her, and I don't know Pat, so that's kind of where I'm at. But looking at both applications, I think we're going to be fine with whoever we go with.
I would follow that up with the same words. I think we all agree, these are two very solid candidates. I also like the fact that they're both female candidates, because that adds some diversity to this board, and I, I think that would be a real plus. I know Edna through the, through my role as mayor, quite honestly, but I also know that she's a very active real estate person, and those people normally have a finger on the pulse of the community very, very well. I also know her to be very passionate and full of energy, and, and again, I just don't know the other nominee as much, so, or applicant, I should say. So with that said, I, I would probably, I would probably go with Edna, and I, I bet you any amount of money, the other one's just as good, I just don't know her as well. Member Robinson?
Yes, I, I read and reviewed and read and reviewed both, both applications, again, both are fine, and I'm partial always to individuals that are active in, in the community, in the nonprofit community, and most people know that about me, and I would put my shoes with, with Edna Wilson.
Okay. Member Nelson, you back up?
Yeah, I was just going to add, because I didn't add this, she is also part Native American, and her husband is Native American, so it just adds some more diversification.
All right. I think counsel is done. Any cards?
Sir, that was Nathan Slusher who spoke.
Okay. Very good. Let's, well, let's have a nomination. I think we only got two, so let's go ahead and have a nomination. Member Robinson?
I make the nomination for the replacement on the North Brevard Economic Zone. Um, I make the nomination of for the replacement on the North Brevard Economic Zone. Uh, council of Edna Wilson.
I have a nomination for Edna Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Stokoe, seconds. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, vote for Ms. Wilson. Uh, roll call, member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson will be the new member to this zone committee. Um, I, I totally feel like they'd both be great. I also feel like we go back to, uh, Ms. Taylor, that adds some more depth. And then quite honestly, Nathan is, stays in the, the ring, I think that, uh, we have three or four qualified candidates. So, uh, congratulations to Ms. Wilson. I look forward to seeing her at the meetings. City manager.
Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, you're on item six G. Uh, the terms of three regular members, Danny Aton, Joseph Richardson, and Kathleen Riley, and one alternate member, member Christopher Childs expires on thirty-one January, two thousand and twenty-three. There's also a current vacancy for one regular member with an unexpired term to expire on thirty-one January, two thousand and twenty-four of next year. Regular members Aton and Richardson have expressed their desire to continue to serve on this board as regular members for the two-year terms to expire on thirty-one Jan-, two thousand and twenty-five. Regular member Riley does not wish to seek reappointment at this time. Alternate members Childs and Aaron Fason, um, currently serve as alternate members. Both alternate members have expressed their desire to be nominated as regular members. If not appointed as regular members, Mr. Childs and Mr. Fason desire to continue to serve as alternate members in their current positions. There are, uh, two additional applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Johnston and Mr. Theodore Gerard have both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as regular or alternate members.
Um, want to comment? Go ahead, member Robinson.
Yes, and looking at these, and I know, uh, both of the, uh, alternates, uh, have came through us since I've been on the city council. And there are, uh, two slots that, that will be available, including the one that is, uh, uh, that we know about. Because we have the slot for, uh, uh, I don't want to miscall his name. Last week we approved, or last meeting, we approved, uh, his resignation. Uh, Woody.
Woody Wright, yeah.
Yeah, we approved Woody Wright resignation on, uh, last, and that slot has not been filled. So my recommendation at this particular time is to take both of the alternates and place them in the slots uh, that, uh, will be available, and then, uh, look at the, uh, alternate slots. Uh, therefore, or maybe even go back and, uh, and open for more application.
Just so I don't get the math wrong, we have three regular members up for grabs right now. Or four regular. Okay, so the two, Joe and Danny, could be reappointed, and we could go with what, uh, member Robinson just said.
That would fill your regular positions.
And then we would just need an alternate.
And, and you would be opening up two alternate positions.
All right, well, let's, let's work on this. Before I do that, um, anybody who is able to, I think there's a couple of you here would like to come up for two or three minutes and give us an idea of what you're thinking. Um, Mr. Fason, I know you're back there. And I know you can articulate.
Yep.
Uh, Aaron Fason, five thirty, Loxley, Loxley Lane. Uh, good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, and council people. Thank you all so much for having me here today. Um, sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board has been an complete joy. Uh, being those born and raised right here in Titusville, being part of the policymaking process has been wonderful. Um, for any of those that may have seen some of our meetings, one of the things that I'm very passionate about is affordable housing. So I love that Titusville's growing. I love that Titusville's moving in the direction that it is. But however, however, there are residents that have been here for quite some time that just hasn't kept up with the pace of where Titusville's growing. And so we don't, we want to make sure that we're not outpacing them. Okay, so, um, sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board has allowed me to have that voice for this community. And I've just so much enjoyed it. Uh, and I look forward to continuing to serve on that board and maybe, you know, future, uh, you know, someplace else within the city. Uh, there's other boards, there's other commissions that are available that I may also choose to sit on. But, um, but right now, I'm enjoying sitting in the city of Titusville, sitting on the Planning and Zoning and serving the residents of the city of Titusville. Do you guys have any questions?
Are these questions, or are they already up here? Member Nelson, any questions? Okay. Member Stokoe, did you have one?
Yes, and just to clarify, just while we're making our decision, we have three positions to appoint that will expire January, two thousand and twenty-five, and one that will expire January of two thousand and twenty-four. So one's two years from now, one's a year. Do you have a preference on which one of those you would like?
No.
Okay.
I just enjoy being part of the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. No other questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Anybody else out there who is an applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Uh, my name's Theodore Gerard. I go by Ted. And I appreciate the opportunity for consideration. I would simply say to the council that I'm hoping I can bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission my experience I've shared, uh, in my resume and my background information, and assist the city in, uh, proper growth and controlled growth and, um, growth for good. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, any questions? Uh, member Stokoe.
If you, real quick, if you were not appointed, um, as a regular member, we, would you be open once alternate members were advertised to be an alternate member?
No, ma'am. Actually, no, I wanted to address that. I appreciate you asking the question now. Thank you.
Anyone else who is on the? I got you.
Okay. Uh, you know my name, Stan Johnston, professor engineer. I worked for the city for years. And, uh, uh, embarrassing, I want to tell you something that you don't like to hear. I know Mr. Parrish didn't want to hear, but as an engineer, I've been taught that water flows downhill. And the city of Titusville does not seem to recognize that, and they disagree with FDOT and many of us. For example, right now, is this, is this is the way our, our, and I'm talking about planning, planning, planning and zoning right now. Is this, this is the way, uh, it looks like when you look, look westerly from I ninety-five. And I'm talking about some places, uh, between Fox Lake Road and that, and I'm talking about a seven-foot by three-foot box culvert. Looks like this. That's why I look west later. Now, this, this is our FDOT engineers that did this, that this is done. Seven-foot by three-foot box culvert, two nine, no, a nine-foot by three-foot box culvert. Well, what's it there for? Planning won't answer the question. I gave him this picture. That's upside down. You get the idea. It's not, it's not functioning. Okay, two six-foot by four-foot box culverts. And two six-foot by, the two six-foot by box culverts don't, doesn't quite look like this. So in other words, what I'm saying is that, is that I would like to be there because I believe water flows downhill, and so does God. In fact, it's in the Bible. If you want to look at it. I mean, I found places in the Bible, Moses, you know, and part of the Red Sea. That was a miracle. We're not going to have a miracle here. Water flows downhill, and I want the city to understand that. In spite of what, what, uh, the report in your sustainability report, resilience report, it's all wrong. They don't give information. They give you false information. Planning Department gives you false information on resilience and sustainability. It's horrible. I don't know, but what I believe is, I still believe water flows downhill, and that's my profession. But when the city of Titusville, the planning department, I just told you what they did. They're not recognizing the FDOT and what they've done. This is millions of dollars investment under I ninety-five. They designed all these engineers. So what do we say? We say they're wrong? We don't, we're ignoring it. We say they're wrong? That's what our planning department's doing. I call this negligence, nonsense. And I'm saying to you, water does flow downhill, and that's a good reason to, to, uh, put me on the Planning and Zoning Commission because I still believe, and that's my profession, that water flows downhill. The city continues to deny this. City manager does too. I contact him. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Just sort of misses. Is there anybody else out there that's an applicant? It's okay. I don't see that. Um, I would first say that I have, uh, been pleased with, um, members, uh, Richardson and Anton. I think they add a lot, very passionate, um, work hard, know the facts. I appreciate that. Um, I have, uh, had conversations and, uh, uh, honestly worked with, but discussed things with the city. Um, met with Mr. Child several times. Uh, he's, he's very passionate. I think he's just looking for an opportunity to get his foot, uh, in a little harder and, uh, work hard. And then, of course, we just heard from Mr. Fason, who I've known for, I don't know, a long time now, thirty or forty years. The older I get, the longer I've known you. So I, I feel that, uh, those four are outstanding candidates, and we'd benefit if we, uh, move that direction. I think that's exactly what you had said, member Robinson. And, um, uh, get me straight here, we can get those four, uh, nominated at the same time?
Yes, sir.
I would look, well, I would like to.
I'm going to say this. I had a concern about Chris Childs. One of our Rotarians pointed out on Facebook where he was basically saying city council doesn't do anything. Uh, and so I'm sort of like, I wish he was here tonight because I'd ask him, you know, eh, why do you want to be part of a group if we don't do anything? And if that's his opinion of us, and he still holds that opinion, then I don't want him as a regular member. To me, that's just totally inappropriate.
Did you see that, or you had heard that?
I saw it. Now, I will say, he told somebody that he did take it down, has taken it down, but it was up for a while. Um, and I just, I'm sort of like, why do you want to be part of us if we are worthless? Because I don't think we're worthless. I think we do a darn good job. Uh, I understand we're the only ones in the county to have a low-impact development ordinance.
A tree ordinance?
Yeah.
Combined.
And the tree ordinance, and I think we've done a lot of good for the city. And for somebody to turn around and just sort of diss us like that, that just, that bothers me. So that's my feelings. I, I don't feel like, unless Chris was here and he could explain that, I don't feel like I can vote for.
I wish he was, because obviously it's a different tone when I'm speaking to him. Facebook does that to people. But I'm disappointed to hear that. I will say that. I'll leave it at that, and I'll hear from member Stokoe.
Yep. Actually, I forgot about that. I have seen some comments on social media. I'm on there a lot. Um, just, I, I use, I know there's a lot of hate relationship with it. I'm all for free speech, and I appreciate it because I might not comment, but I always like to see what citizens are saying, what they're perceiving, and see how we can better, um, address or be more transparent. But I, to member Nelson, I, I get what you're saying, given his role on P and Z and representing the city. I do want to make sure that there is some, I don't, communication there. I guess that would be my word. I appreciate both members, and I know they both show up as alternates, and I appreciate that he is always there. Um, I just, I, I would like, I wish I could talk to him too, because I would like to have that communication and dialogue of what is the issue, or how can we better address it, to make sure we are on the same page.
I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead. Um, are you done?
Yeah, and I would, just to add to that, keeping in mind that they are an extension of city council, so we want to make sure who's on the board. It's a, from my perspective at least, it's a diverse board representing multiple viewpoints. So I am all about that, and I, I don't expect everybody on every board to agree with me or you or anybody. I do expect a level of respect and, um.
And I expect when they go out in the community that they're not going to be bad-mouthing us. You know, uh, if they want badmouth us, if they want to come to us and say, hey, we don't like what you're doing, this is why, that's fine. But for somebody to turn around and go out in the community, and to me, Facebook is going on community and badmouthing. I just.
Well, clearly, I agree with that.
Can't deal with that.
You know, it's, it's been my life and my background, certainly in coaching. You're either with me or you're against me. Now, I agree with member Stokoe too. I don't expect every committee member, uh, or every board member to agree and, you know, say, oh, they're disagreeing. It's not fine. But I, I think the disrespect and the, the badmouthing isn't necessary, not professional, and like it or not, if you apply to be on the board, you're kind of part of the team. And if you don't want to be part of the team, don't apply for the board. Um, city attorney or city manager, um, what's your, you, you hear what's going on. I didn't know anything about that. Can we, before we discuss what we want to do with that, do we, can we vote on three and put one on hold, or do we need to get them all four done?
Yeah, just a reminder, you have the two reappointments. The other two are different ending dates, so when you do make a motion, you need to, to clarify who is filling which position based on the expiration date. One will, one of those openings will expire in two thousand and twenty-four, one in two thousand and twenty-five. So when you do your motion, appointing the two, reappointing, that's fine. But remember, the other two openings each have a different expiration date. You could appoint as many members as you'd like tonight. If you want to table one of the appointments, you could do that. That's, that's your discretion on how you want to handle that.
I would recommend that we table his, let him come, if he is sincere about what he wants to do, then at our, uh, next meeting, have him come in and explain. And he may be able to convince us that it was a problem when he put it on. So I, I would like to give him a chance since he is an alternate now, but I, I would not vote for him now, hearing what I've just heard.
Let me interrupt. Breaking news. I can, uh, I was wondering. I just checked my phone, just to see if he's watching. Uh, and apparently he is, and he's not a council member. He's not any board member. I can communicate with him. Make that clear. Uh, I did not see anything on Facebook about city council. I have an emergency and couldn't be there tonight. I would never say anything like what member Nelson just said. I said, I, I mean, I don't know where to go. I can only tell you that what I said about him before I heard any of that is where I was. I, I feel like he was somebody who I, who talked to me often. Um, I believe he still owns the Christmas store down there. And, um, I've been by there to talk to him, and he seems very interested in the city. Interested enough that at one time he did run for city council, uh, a couple of years ago against member Stokoe, actually. And, um, I thought he put together a really good campaign for, you know, the situation. So, um, that being said, clearly he's watching, so he cares. Um, can't be here. Uh, said he didn't say it. I'm going to go with what he said. So that's where I'm at. Member Robinson.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Oh, that's got to change that. You guys got to change that. It says, member Vice Mayor. It's easier for me to say Vice Mayor, too. Oh, your mic, your mic, your mic, your mic. Vice Mayor, your mic, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like, but I, um, uh, I'd like to make a motion. I'd, uh, like to make the motion in, uh, in the process of, of reappointing the two members that are presently on the board, Joseph Richardson and, uh, Ms., uh, Catherine Riley.
No, it's, uh, Danny Aton.
Danny Aton.
Ms. Riley did not want to be.
You wanted me to reappoint first.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Riley did not want to be reappointed. Uh, Mr. Aton and Mr. Richardson did.
Okay, Aton and, uh, and Richardson for the, uh, regular position.
Yeah, we can do it that way, right?
Okay.
Okay, very good. I got the motion from Vice Mayor. Just so you know, they changed that up there now. I kept reading the Vice Mayor. And I have a second from, who again, member Nelson, uh, to, uh, point, or is that reappoint? Reappoint member Anton and member Richardson. Roll call vote.
Uh, yes, sir. Just clarifying, reappointing those two individuals, their expiration term will be, um, continuing on to January thirtieth. Yes, sir. Just clarifying, reappointing those two individuals, their expiration term will be continuing on to January 31st, 2025.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
They are reappointed and I appreciate their service. Vice Mayor, you want to do it again?
And now, my role is to take the alternate and put them in position of the regular...
Mike.
The goal now is to take the alternates and put them in a regular position.
You had the two alternates, Mr. Childs and Mr. Fason, who are alternates and they have requested to become regular members.
Now, I can say that my motion...
Again, Vice Mayor, each one has a different expiration date. So when you do a motion, you need to decide what individual you are going to do a motion to approve for which, to fill which vacancy. Each vacancy has a different termination date.
Okay. I make the motion to put both Mr. Fason and Mr. Childs in the two open slots with Mr. Fason just filling the slot that expires in '25 and Mr. Childs filling the slot that expires in '24.
Well done, Vice Mayor. I have the motion. I'm not going to repeat it. So I'm just going to have the motion. Yeah, I'm looking for a second. Interesting. All right, got a second with discussion. All right, so nobody gets on. All right, Member Cole.
Yes. I am hesitant to vote, hearing what Member Nelson said. I know Member Nelson very well and I trust what she said. So I cannot vote for putting Mr. Childs on until I've had an opportunity to actually hear what he has to say. But I don't think that stops us from nominating Mr. Fason.
That's correct.
So I will make that nomination. Okay.
And I would second that.
I have a, I have a motion for Member Fason. No, I'm just reading this again. Well, you're kind of going to be a member, Member Fason. And I have a second from Member Cole. Think I got that right. Maybe I got it backwards.
Could I ask the motion maker to confirm your motion to appoint Mr. Fason? Would that be to the term to expire in 2025?
That would be correct.
And the second would still hold.
All right, I got a motion from Member Cole, a second from Member Nelson on Mr. Fason. Roll call vote on Mr. Fason till '25.
Yes, sir. And I'm just truing out the minutes as a regular member as well.
Yes, thank you so much.
Respectfully, Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, passes unanimously. We are one member short of the P and Z.
So yes, sir, you have one regular member and you now have two alternate members open if you don't reappoint Mr. Childs to an alternate position because he did ask if, if not appointed to a regular position, to be reappointed as a alternate with a 31 January 2023, I mean, 2025.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I thought we had reported him as, reappointed him as an alternate.
No, sir, you haven't done that.
We haven't done that with him yet. Childs and me. Right, Childs. We haven't. All right, so the, on the table is appointing Childs as an alternate, nominating him and voting him on the P and Z or other. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I make the motion for the time being to do, to reappoint Mr. Childs as an alternate and also postponing the selection for the other position.
And would you, are you tabling the selection of the regular to the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to nominate Childs as the alternate and table the rest?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have the motion from Vice Mayor. I need a second. And we are where we were before. Member Stokoe.
This is not a second. My, I'm thinking, can we just table both, the alternate reappointment and the member? That way, potentially, we could have Christopher Childs here. He, and if it does get resolved, he may get the actual regular member versus the alternate. That is my thinking. And I'd hate to give him a disservice of, let's give him the alternate for a whole nother year and miss out on being able to be the regular.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
I'm saying, yes, can, would that be possible?
Absolutely. It's possible if the motion is amended, but that's not the motion on the table now.
Withdraw the motion.
Can I amend the motion or does Vice Mayor?
Yes. I will amend that motion to table Mr. Childs' motion for the alternates to be returned and to be extended as an alternate and table to our next meeting, giving him a chance to make his own presentation.
And could I add you, one more item is to table the other two openings?
To table the other two as well.
As part of the agenda for the next meeting.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to table the rest. Roll call vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
As tabled. I will, I will say this once again. Facebook is not my friend. I just, I look forward for him to being able to say what he says. I, I mean, if you saw it, you saw it. If you heard it, that's different, but you just say you saw it. And even at that, and Member Childs clearly is watching, so we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. And we will go from there. City manager.
Item H, 6H, is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Currently, there are two applications on file for consideration from alternate member Yvette Fleese and Robert Johnson. They have both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Titusville Commission, Environmental Commission as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on 30 November 2024. Mr. William Young currently serves as an alternate with a term to expire on 30 November 2024. However, he does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time.
All right. This is where I go to my favorite Waltism. Counsel, what's your pleasure? You guys that weren't here don't know what I'm talking about. Oh, Member Nelson?
Well, Yvette is here and she has been an alternate. And I understand she wants to move up. So to me, it's either we appoint her or we ask that we postpone this for two weeks and see if we can get additional applications.
It's actually a skip week, so you'll have three weeks in between the next meeting. It'll be February 14th.
I would...
Valentine's Day.
Herman, don't start, Mr. Cole, Member Cole. I would say, just my reading of things and listening to her speak, et cetera, I would be fine with moving forward with her. I just think that she's qualified, cares, she's here. So I don't think we need to table. That's my opinion. Member Stokoe.
Yep. I think that's fine, too. I did want to make sure that she wasn't on any other boards that we currently have. Yep, okay.
All right. With that, would you come up and give us a little hello? And like I said, I've looked at your application. I've seen you speak several times, including tonight. I think you'll be great. So I'll leave it at that. Go ahead.
No, I love doing what I'm doing. I love doing the, I just love the involvement and I love the opportunity of taking care of our environment and however that manifests itself. So I really would like to continue and I'd really like to step up. I think that most of the months that I've been there, I have sat on the board. So I'm used to it now because there's been somebody missing.
Yes.
So... I love our city. I love our river. I've lived here for thirty-some-odd years. And I've got time. I've got the time and the experience to continue doing what I'm doing with it.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments or questions? I feel really good about it. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other applicants? Step up if you...
Stan Johnston, I think you're making a mistake. Please listen. Is that we had a, have left from us, we had Woody Rice. Do you remember what he was doing? He was on T E C and P and Z. You're not, you haven't started replacing somebody for that position. You're getting down to the deadline. So what are you going to do? You missed it.
No, we didn't miss it. We're good.
Yeah, you did. Who was it going to be? Who's replacing Woody Rice?
Talk about you.
No, who's replacing Woody Rice? Woody Rice was on both P and Z and T and C. You were having two.
That's something those boards will decide.
We already have, sorry, Mayor. We, Tom Perez, I believe, is serving as that dual...
He knows. I know, but you...
We don't, we don't have to have one.
Oh, you don't have to do another one?
We don't have to have two, but if they decide to have two, we can work that.
Okay, well, I'm here. I know y'all mentioned, talked about Childs, but my goodness, I thought you had mentioned about me because, you know, I've said some bad things about some people in City Hall, haven't I?
Really?
Yeah. So anyhow, what's going on? I think I'm good for T E C. I've been recommended by former clerk of courts, clerk of courts, Scott Ellis. Maybe all, some of y'all know them. And also Richard Vitopka, former city engineer at City Titusville. And I was paid top salary when I was at the city. So please look at this. This has to do with what's going on. I will be presenting this to T E C. This is the, all these, this sewage spill that is denied by our city manager. And it's bad. It's denied by Mr. Stauffer, too. Although there's all these photos, see all these photos and everything here? Shows here, it says, violation of Florida statute 838.022. So you've seen some of these pictures. I've sent pictures to you and so forth and... He's lying. Open and notoriously lying. I got all kinds of photos. Got all kinds of witnesses. But he's lying. Open and notoriously. And that's why I compared him to Bernie Madoff. And it was different. Bernie Madoff didn't have obvious and notorious lying. Neither did Hitler when he was there. He controlled the propaganda and so forth. So what you have, we have the City of Titusville a horrible, it's not a bad situation, it's a horrible situation. We have somebody who's open, notorious, blatant, arrogant. I don't know what we can do. He's lying dishonesty. And he's supportive. He's like the Pied Piper of dishonesty for the City of Titusville. And you guys are like, what, minions? Fools? Hypocrites? What are you doing?
Time's up. All right, so just so we said it, and I said this to you last meeting, by rule, and you've already said what you had to say about city manager, I don't want anything else about him tonight. Let's go.
Really?
Yep. That's where we go. All right, I forget where I'm at. Yep, give me a motion.
A motion to appoint Yvette Ellis? Fliss to the Titusville Environmental Commission.
I have a nomination for Member Fliss.
As a regular member?
As a regular member.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Look forward to it. Really do. Thank you. Oh, make sure we got everything done there. We need to do, all right, city manager.
Onto petitions and requests.
All right.
Mayor Diesel, if I may, at this time, somebody by the name of Kevin Roche or Roche submitted a... Okay, sir, if you could add the agenda item number to their card.
Are we good?
Before I start, may I approach?
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking. I can't wait. You'll be good at it. I guess we go that way, Vice Mayor.
All right. For the record, Nathan Slusher at 860 Allen Dell Street. Tonight, I'm presenting a plan I came up with called Rails Program. Rails stands for Right-of-Way Agriculture Integration Leasing System. This plan is to bring more agriculture into the city limits of the City of Titusville without the need of using an inch of land that's not already in use by the city. It would have no effect on the current land on the market for building and housing development. However, what it will allow for is the startup of small agricultural businesses inside the city limits, which help our supply chain, thus reducing food costs to the citizens who live here. A year and a half ago, I came in and I said that we have supply chain bubbles. And those bubbles aren't going anywhere. And now eggs are eight dollars a dozen in places, unfortunately. They will come back down as that bubble moves on to the next product. But we can counteract that by localizing supplies and growing them as close to home as possible. Titusville as a city is completely dependent on outside food sources. We don't have an agriculture system that benefits our city, and I think it's going to hurt us in the long run. We have 34.31 square miles, and I believe, if my memory serves me correct, it's 134 miles of roadway. Each of those have a right-of-way on either side. Some of those are in neighborhoods where we're not going to be able to use. So for this example, I'm going to use the number 75 miles of roadways that are currently usable for this plan. The idea is to lease these right-of-ways to start up businesses that can sell their crops, grow and sell crops wholesale or retail to make money for their families. The land would be leased per linear foot. For those that don't know what linear foot is, it's left to right as far as the property is, one foot at a time. So like, if you've got an eight-foot from the road to the end of the sidewalk, that's a linear foot. Per linear foot is suggested because not all right-of-ways are the same with the cross. Leasing is contractual, meaning the contract rules can protect our city and our city assets, such as piping. For example, if the contract prohibits certain growth of specific trees like avocados, that way it doesn't hurt our city assets. Contracts can protect the city or can protect the leasing if something were to happen from the car crash. And this would also offset city maintenance costs. Once land is contracted, the city will no longer be responsible for maintaining the grass and the leasing can be accountable for maintenance of that section of roadway.
Can you summarize in a minute?
I think I can get done in one minute.
All right, let's, can we give him a minute? All right, one minute.
Go. All right. The next page is an example, so you could see what it would be beneficial to a farmer. Basically, using tomatoes because it's the number one product in Florida. If they sold them at retail, you could make approximately $48,000 on 500 feet of road, on one side only. The next slide gives you an example of what the city revenue would come out of that. If you leased them at a dollar per linear foot per year, it's $792,000. If you leased them at a dollar per linear foot per month, it's a revenue for the city for $9.5 million. And if you leased it at a dollar per week, that cost jumps to $42 million, which is one-third of our city budget. So you guys could vote to reduce taxes and still fund the city. And I'm, you can read the rest. I've only got five seconds left, so...
I appreciate you giving this to us. Thank you very much, Nathan. That's well thought out. Deeply thought out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, petitions or requests.
Kevin Rose at 1500 Hardy Street, Titusville. I'm realizing I'm a little bit early. I met with Jeff Davis, concerned about the RVs and ten people that are living in the parks. And I'm just finding out now that this isn't coming up till the 14th. So I'm a little early. In case I missed the 14th, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that concern me. As far as the RVs, van life people, people living in cars, people living in tents in the parks, they're kind of getting moved along from parish, but then now living at Kennedy Point Park. they're kind of getting moved along from Parish, but then now living at Kennedy Point Park and Marina Park as well. And I'm for this ordinance that we're gonna be voting on, you guys are gonna be voting on, I guess, coming up on the fourteenth. Some of the loopholes that concern me. If you're overnight fishing at Kennedy Point Park, Marina Park, and Parish, if you're overnight fishing, are you not camping? Camping's not allowed, so before we have a problem with people saying, "I'm not living in the park, I'm fishing," I wanted to bring that up. Rocket launches, this is probably a sensitive subject, because we want people coming here to see rocket launches, but a lot of them are camping in the park. A lot of people are living in the park, claiming that they're here to see a rocket launch. If we've got two launches a week and a scrub, you could pretty much live in the park your whole life, because you're here for a launch. If they're fishing, they're gonna be required to produce a fishing license. They're also skipping out on the twelve-percent tourist tax. If they had proper accommodations, they'd be contributing to our local economy, if they had, you know, if an RV park or something like that. Let's see. They're dumping brown waste and gray waste, and they're actually using the bath, using Titusville Beach, Parish Park Beach, I'm sorry, as a bathroom. We've seen that happening. Not sure if I'm skipping anything here. Pier two-twenty, you can, the owner was here a little while ago. He left once he found out this was off the agenda for tonight. But you can't get to Pier two-twenty without passing what looks like an RV tent city, you know what I mean? Both sides of the road and under the bridge. So I know it's, might be Brevard County instead of City of Titusville, but we're still concerned.
Is that right now?
Yes. Yep. You know, they've been moved along from Sandpoint. That's getting closed at night, but now they're under the bridge, and it just, it looks bad. Trying to think, is there anything I forgot here? The RVs, they're parking cross spacing at Sandpoint, so like, an RV of forty footers taking up six regular parking spaces. And as they're getting moved along from other parks, we see that happening more and more often, so the local residents don't have a place to park. So just a few things I wanted to bring up. I think that's pretty much it. Hope I didn't skip anything, but anyway, thanks for hearing me out.
I appreciate you staying around. I really do. I know that was unfortunate that the timing wasn't right. But I think any heads up we can get on that sort of thing, and certainly we're very aware of that, which is one reason I wouldn't say it's that right now, because I like to go down there and see. And I can tell you, I've seen the RVs take up six spots. That part, I see way too often.
And, you know, as more and more are coming here, you know, some people have really nice RVs that are hundreds of thousands of dollars from up north, and other people are living in their cars, so it's a wide variety of people, basically, you know.
Well, I appreciate it. Obviously, there's an effort to address some of this.
Yep. And I think on the fourteenth, you guys are gonna be voting on the ordinance?
I'm not sure. I think it'll be a first reading.
At council's direction, we'll be bringing an ordinance to you for first reading on the fourteenth, but it's not creating regulations. It's merely providing a process when it comes to trespassing from public facilities. That merely means that if someone is violating the laws, violating the rules, they could be subject to trespass. The whole point of the ordinance is providing a due process for that trespass, and providing that it goes to the magistrate notice. So you'll be seeing that at your, for first reading at your fourteenth meeting.
And just so you know, because it's not till the fourteenth, I haven't been briefed, nor have I seen it. And I don't think the rest of the council has any idea either, so we'll become more informed very soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Petitions or requests? Weren't you up here three minutes ago?
Stan Johnston.
All right, start clock.
There's some things happening in our community, and I've told you about the last, but I mentioned at the last petitions or requests, I mentioned about right clean water, right clean water. It's coming along, state petition, so get up there and sign it. I know you guys want clean water, so you can sign for it, and you don't have to sue about it. The next thing that's important is what's happening in our national news, and that is that Titusville MEMS is on the headlines with Crosley Green. And that has to do with Free Crosley Green. I think he's been in jail for about thirty-six years, prison for something he didn't do, was a murderer in MEMS. And there's police who believe he didn't do it, and there's reports written that believe he didn't do it. And that was kept away from the... What was it, Ben? Didn't know it. So that was hidden evidence. It's called Brady material. It's also called discovery. So please join people to oppose what's going on, and that is to support the Supreme Court to make a decision to free him. To free him, because our state attorneys won't do it. They won't do it for whatever reason. So let's have justice. Let's have peace. Let's free Crosley Green. Thank you for that. I'm still concerned about what the city's going to do about this dishonesty of our, of some people in the city. And there's some guy who I've talked to, bringing about a shyster and fraudster and so forth. I'm just trying to be honest with you guys, because it's a violation of law, and I've quoted the law to you. And my understanding is that you guys can be convicted too, accessories or whatever. Read the law carefully. Please check with your attorney, because you guys too. If you read, if you read, read it carefully, it sounds like these, if you're supporting the Pied Piper, and you know it's not true. It's a felony. Your Pied Piper is dishonest. And you, maybe you can say, "Well, you're minions," or something like that, or you didn't know any better. But I'm not sure if that can be considered that way, because someone can get hurt in this, big time. Just like Flint, Michigan, a lot of people got hurt. I think it was over six-hundred-million-dollar settlement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other petitions or requests? I see none. City manager.
Mayor, on to consent agenda item. Council, are there any questions that you have that staff may be able to answer for consent agenda items A through G?
I see none.
Council is, do you want to pull any items A through G? Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
Yes, sir. One individual for five items.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item eight A, approved resolution three twenty-twenty-three, City of Titusville Investment Policy Update. Consent agenda item eight B, consent to join the HIV antitrust cat class action litigation. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the partnership agreement with home program funding agreement for repairs to existing affordable rental housing located at four-seventeen Rock Pit Road and associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the work order for engineering services for laboratory facility renovations final design. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the transfer of unencumbered ARPA funds allocated to the nonprofit service providers to the Boys and Girls Club. Consent agenda item eight F, consent to give the city attorney's office the authority to bid at public option on Sun Valley properties, which are contiguous to the Sun Valley properties purchased by the city for its wellfield protection. Consent agenda item eight G, approve resolution number four twenty-twenty-three, Sculptor Charter School back to the eighties AMAX Brewer Bridge five-k road closure.
Thank you very much. Counsel, anything? Call the card.
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston, items A, D, E, F, and G.
I don't know what those signs have to do with any of those, but you're gonna bring them. Remember, the judge said, or lawyer said, "Stay on topic." You look at me, you agree? And don't go that direction.
Stan Johnston.
Ten minutes.
There's some elements in our staff that are dishonest, horribly dishonest. And I've pointed them out a number of times.
Hold up one second. Stop the clock. Did you give us any letters you're talking about yet?
Beg your pardon?
Oh, well, okay. Give me those letters again, please.
Yes, sir. That was A, D, E, F, G.
All right. All right, go ahead. Thank you. Start clock.
On...
A.
Eight A, this gets, this, I'm opposed to eight A, and I'm opposed to eight D. And it has to do with the number of people who are in the city, who are making decisions, who have been horribly dishonest. And one of the things that was involved in this, in these crimes, has to do with this. It's right here.
That was wrong. He's going back to wall.
Fraud. And this fraud is right here, it's in O R B eight-five-oh-six, page thirteen-seventy-four. It's maybe three to five pages long, and tells you all about what happened in this fraud, that some people in the city are involved in this fraud, big time. And it's a serious, we're talking about seventy thousand dollars fraud. Seventy thousand dollars fraud. And I think Mr. Cole, you've heard about it probably, so you can take a break. So seventy thousand dollars for an engineering report that says Stan Johnston was a lousy engineer.
Stop the clock, and I don't like to stop the clock, because I don't like you to get through it. But what's that got to do with A, B, D, E, or F? I'd like to see you talk about these.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So that fraud thing has nothing to do with this.
She's heard this before.
All right, so you can run right through it.
In fact, she's involved with it.
Start the clock, go. No, 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 no. That's got nothing to do, what letter is it?
I, I, you, please listen. Focus.
Oh, I'm listening. You're talking about something that has nothing to do with these. Go, run the clock.
Focus. I said, here's what I said. I'll repeat what I said, because I want you to take, be careful to listen. Make sure you listen to it. That I said that eight A and eight D, I'm opposed to those. I'm talking about two of those together, because their staff in the City of Titusville are, that are what? They're non-honest. They're dishonest, horribly dishonest. I mean, my goodness, and not only that, is that I've got five pages that I've recorded in public records in Brevard County. I think it's five pages about the fraud. None of that, it's on, it's on YouTube. My goodness, it's on YouTube. It's on YouTube many months about this fraud. And it's been continuing fraud. It even began with Mayor Johnson. And he left with it. Somebody told me that's one of the reasons he left. I don't know if that's true. I don't think it's true. But anyhow, oh, it does say somebody. This is not, this says mayor here, that's not mayor. That's not this guy. That's somebody who was before this guy, because this guy is good.
Still has nothing to do with that.
No, but he's a, he's good in football, too. And so, no, really, this is a serious fraud. It's fraudulent what's going on. And it mentions somebody's name here and stuff like that, but I don't trust him. I mean, I see it's, it has to do with this right here also. Open and notorious, blatant, flagrant violation of law, saying that we didn't have any sewer spill. And my golly, there it is. I've got all kinds of pictures of it there. Oh, my golly, and I got Florida statutes quoted up there in the left-hand corner, upper-left-hand corner. Oh, my goodness. Shouldn't you guys be watching this? I mean, I've sent you emails about it. I come to your doors, I put it on doors, I put it on the door, City Hall, and in Florida Today and so forth. Florida Today won't report on it. So here's these, I mean, all these notices. So anyhow, these two items are, have connections to the City of Titusville that are incredibly dishonest, and so does this one right here. Same here. You've seen this one. You've seen this one before, because this is a false report, that's directly a false report to the City of Titusville regarding the Water Resources Department and some other staff members. Now, this has the same thing. This says the same thing. This says the same thing. Because we have some members in the city staff who are dishonest. Shysters, hustlers, crooks. And just read the statutes and so forth. So here's another one. That's what this sign says. This sign says that. I got another one. This has to do with eight D especially and eight F. Eight D and eight F has to do with this thing right here. National news. Guardian. I didn't send you this. It's parts per what? It's not parts per million. It's not parts per billion. It's parts per trillion. B. Fox. This guy right over here. Haven't even addressed it. I even made a poster of it. Still didn't address it. National news.
What letter is that?
It's eight F and eight D.
Public tax deed sale.
Eight D. Regarding that particular area is that, is that, I don't know how, we don't have much of a report on how that thing is going, because at one time, we did, we had it resting, the whole wellfield resting. And I was thinking for years, I don't know if you, how much we're getting out of that.
And that's F?
It's eight F. I think it should be questioned. Do we really want that? I'm not sure. I have doubts about the way it's being handled, the way a lot of these things have been handled. They're just not, it's just nonsense, what's going on. So let's go on to...
Did you say G or no?
I did mention G.
That's an interesting one.
And that one I have really, I just want to make sure that I would have enough, I'm neutral about that.
Have enough material.
And on eight E, I'm really, that's fine. That's fine. But on these eight D and eight A, it's horrible what's going on.
Work order for engineering services for laboratory facility.
Yeah, yeah, because the way it's handled, it's handled by someone who was, we've asked, for example, the laboratory services for manhole number eight H was, that's on Indian River Avenue. It had too numerous to count, T and T C. And so, and now he denies it. He denies it. And we had, we had all kinds of trucks over there taking sewage from this, the Space View Park after December the nineteenth, and it was still flowing into the river. Denies that too. He denies that, what he spoke, I think it was about January the tenth, we had a big meeting, and we had, and he said that he protected the intersection of U S one and Garden Street. He protected it by having it flow into that inlet that's on, that's at the intersection right near that building. Of course, it was going into that inlet, and it went right to the river after December the ninth, which is dishonesty for consent order number twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-one-three. It's on tape. It's on tape. And yet, the consent order, the official is a false report by the City of Titusville, approved by you guys. Approved by you guys. It's a false report. Florida statutes eight thirty-eight point oh-two-two says a false report. That is interest to the public is a felony. Okay, I want y'all to think about that, because it appears to be on that, in that regard, is that you ask yourself the question, council members can ask the question, what am I? Am I some kind of minion following a Pied Piper? Am I a fool? Am I just a hypocrite?
What number are you on now?
I'm on
Go.
Water Resources one, eight D and eight F. And this has to do with trusting on eight A also, that I'm opposed to, because the people who are involved in this are in the same situation of fraud, dishonesty, open and notorious dishonesty, in which I compare to you Bernie Madoff and Adolf Hitler. It's a bad situation. So the question is, what is, you guys up there are doing what? What I've told you about Sarah Stokel, you're tiptoeing through the tulips, because the reality is, is that you have a problem, and the reality is...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
May I have extra time, please?
I see none. All right, can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve consent agenda, excuse me.
Thank you.
A through G, including the resolutions.
I have a motion to approve consent agenda A through G.
I second.
I have a second, excuse me, by member Nelson, a second by member Cole. I have a second, excuse me, by member Nelson, a second by member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, city manager.
On to ordinances, your agenda item is nine A, which is ordinance number five twenty twenty-three, stormwater technical manual ordinance, the city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number five twenty twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter thirty-seven definitions, section thirty-seven dash one definitions, to amend the definition of legal positive outfall, amending chapter thirty development standards, sections thirty dash two oh seven area of critical concern performance, by amending retention and discharge requirements for all development sites, and thirty dash two oh eight pervious pavement standards in the area of critical concern, to include pervious pavement standards for development outside of the area of critical concern, and amending references for internal consistency. And amending section seven stormwater management technical manual, by amending section seven point four stormwater management design criteria relating to legal positive outfalls, pollutant discharge, pond design, model and stormwater design criteria, and low-impact development, provided for grandfather provisions, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The planning and zoning commission considered this ordinance at their four January twenty twenty-three meeting and recommended approval five zero. On twenty-sixth May twenty twenty, the city council approved advisability for staff to review the land development regulations to encourage redevelopment. Staff recommends the stormwater regulations specifically related to the design standards in the area of critical concern and general pervious pavement standards be updated to provide clarity and ease of use. The city adopted technical manuals and specifications to provide specific design details in support of the land development regulations. Pervious pavement standards are recognized as low-impact development best management practice. The existing pervious pavement standards should be transferred to low-impact development technical manuals to increase the ease and use of the development incentives. Design standards in the area of critical concern specifically related to the elevations and minimum retention requirements will be updated consistent with the comprehensive plan. Mr. Parrish and KB are here to brief you on this ordinance, and this is your public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we distributed to you a draft of this particular ordinance on your agenda, we've added a couple of extra items in there. This was in a version that was distributed between staff, we, I described to you at your last meeting and to the planning and zoning commission, the changes that we were proposing about a net positive water quality or standard for redevelopment, and also I mentioned prohibits wet ponds in the area of critical concern. That third part point that I made was inadvertently omitted out of this ordinance. We reviewed this, this is a draft that was reviewed by several staff members, previous versions of this, it just wasn't captured in the final version to you in your packet. So on the handout I gave to you, you'll see on page two, I've highlighted in gray, and on page three, additional language in gray. We believe that this language is captured in the title and description of this ordinance, and we do not believe it needs to be re-advertized, but it specifically talks about prohibiting or clarifying further in the code how we've already apply right now, where there's a limitation on being able to put in a wet pond inside the area of critical concern. So that, I'll try to answer the questions you have, KB is also here to answer, and Sandra with Public Works is also here to answer the questions.
Mr. Parrish, could you clarify which sections you're referencing as far as those changes?
Sure, they're, section three of the ordinance, specifically code section thirty dash two oh seven, paragraph A, two, and it looks like now it's going to be a new paragraph B.
Is it paragraph B or a second paragraph part of A?
Let me confirm for you. A.
And what is, what is the language that's changed?
So the very last sentence, paragraph here, it says, "For all development sites," and then what's stricken through is below twenty-five feet MSL, retention, and then what's kept in the language is retention and discharge requirements shall be provided in section thirty dash two oh six and thirty dash two twenty for developments located outside the area of critical concern. The additional language that we're proposing, that we're adding, bringing up to you tonight is, "With the exception that wet ponds are prohibited in the area of critical concern." And then what's deleted is, "This includes the use of wet detention." The next section that we are, want to bring up to your attention is in the same section of the ordinance, three, specifically code section thirty dash two oh seven, A, two, B, five, which is a new paragraph six. So on page three, and I'll read what that new language says. "The administrator may approve retention areas that straddle the twenty-five-foot MSL contour on condition that there should be no net reduction in the volume of soil above the twenty-five-feet MSL contour." Two and three are the handout I gave you, are the changes that we just described.
Mayor, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm not looking at the lights.
Brad, I think I'm following you, it looks like you're not really changing anything, maybe just moving where you're, like you're making, you're taking it away from page two, but adding that paragraph on page three, would that be accurate? Or can you just explain if there's a, based on what we already had, and now what we're seeing with the changes, what would be the biggest, like, change, if you would even call it that?
Yeah, the language regarding the wet pond is being moved from another item. However, the language, the item six with the, that the administrator may approve retention areas that straddle the twenty-five-foot contour, that is, that's an addition.
Which, it kind of was alluding to that, I feel like, on page two with the twenty-five foot, so you're just, or are you saying that we're giving authority to the administrator to do that without having to go to council? Would that be the change? Or what, what made you decide to do this, to make it clearer for people?
Yes, we're clarifying, because there's, there's already a requirement that there should be no removal of soil from a site in the area of critical concern.
Okay.
And this is, this is clarifying that apart from being unable to remove material from the site, we must also maintain the volume of aquifer protection that we're providing, and that's what this does.
Okay. So I think it's, if I'm understanding correctly, it looks like it was just trying to clean it up and make it clear. I don't, I'm not seeing, nothing's beaming at me like, this is, oh no, this is a big significant change, from my perspective.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then, I guess, yeah, it was for the city attorney, whenever you're making, making changes, I don't see it as a significant change, so I don't, I think Brad mentioned, like, it's in the title already, that it wouldn't need a new re-advertising.
Sir, you're only required to re-advertise if any change makes the title misleading, and you would have to re-advertise.
Yeah, I feel, I feel comfortable with it.
Or if you were changing the code section that wasn't addressed exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just have one question on the first page, and it may lead to more. We understand that we're talking about the area of critical concern, then it talks about the city adopted a technical manual and specifications to provide, you know, specific detail in the development regulation. And then it addresses the fact that, talking about making sure this is transferred to the low-impact regulation.
Can you tell us which section you're on, or what page you're looking at?
I'm on nine A, page nine twenty-seven, I mean, two, two ninety-seven, I'm sorry.
Of the packet, okay.
I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about, I'm just trying to get out of, so I'm trying to make this, what I've read all weekend, match with what you just gave me today.
So two ninety-seven, I'm sorry, two ninety-seven of the packet, you just?
In the, in the packet.
So that's the cover page? Our cover, the cover page describing, summarizing the ordinance?
Correct, that's it, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, unfortunately, the cover page itself doesn't fully explain everything, which is why I tried to do that with the introduction, with additional points in my presentation at the last meeting and tonight.
Yeah, but, okay, it's, now tell me the difference, since you've given me this, tell me the difference, what is a low-impact development technical manual versus the city technical manual, and how are you going, what are you bringing together in those two manuals?
So.
That's what you have, I mean, that's what I'm just reading.
Last year, we passed a low-impact development ordinance, and then along with that, staff developed the technical manual to implement it as we review plans. So this update mentions that, and specifically refers to the fact that we now have the low-impact development manual, and then there were some items that were in the code, but have now been, but are now referenced as being in the low-impact development manual.
I think I understand what you're asking, um, to add on to what KB's saying, we have our technical manuals, which supplement the code, and are more specific design-related. The low-impact development manual that you're referring to was an ordinance, based on an ordinance that was recently adopted, to supplement those technical manuals. So they all kind of work together, if, I think that's what, to answer your question.
Yeah, and they work together, so you're taking that information and, and making sure they read the same, is that?
Yeah, this whole purpose of this exercise is to provide clarity, yes, sir.
Make sure that they don't read differently, is that, that's what I'm picking up out of this.
Yes, it's to provide clarity, yes.
The pervious pavement standards, I'm over here, hi. The pervious pavement standards used to be in the stormwater technical manual prior to us having a low-impact development manual, but they fit better in the low-impact development manual, since we now allow them outside of the ACC also, so we're just moving the section we already had into a new technical manual.
Okay, that's, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I think overall, it's a pretty simple move, I must admit, when I read this, I'm like, what, what happened, because this is how it always happens. What happened that made us want to change the language and match it up? Was there some, or was it just a check of things?
Some of this language was in our code previously, before these technical manuals were developed, and it, some of it was no longer in the code, and we wanted to put it back to clarify some of the definitions, like what a legal positive outfall is and what you need to do during site plan. It's not really changing from what we're, what we do during the site plan review process, we're just kind of clarifying it to make sure people are aware that these are the processes they need to follow. There are a couple of changes where we've added, if there is flooding in the area, we can now require them to retain the hundred-year storm instead of the twenty-five-year storm, that's one of the bigger ones that is changed.
Okay, and again, unless you're reading this stuff all day like you guys do, it's like, my whole question is, I wonder why they did that? I appreciate that, anybody else? All right, call the cards, please.
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
Yeah, you haven't waved off in a long time. Go ahead, sir.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, and I really hope that someday I would, I would testify in court about how the city is doing. In two thousand twelve, regarding this issue, in two thousand twelve, I first met Mr. Stauffer, who was in charge of stormwater, and I talked to him about the stormwater master plan, he'd been there for years, the head of the stormwater, stormwater control, and never seen this stormwater master plan. So the important thing that I want to share with you is that water flows downhill, and perhaps it should be even put in your manual, because there's so many violations of it by the city of Tidesville, even in that project I'm doing, SNJ Oaks, it's a horrible violation of water flows downhill. And I, today I already explained to you about, about the sustainability resilience, I mean, we're talking about millions of dollars here. And Mr. Parrish has, has given you a false report on resilience, Tidesville, him and Eddie Galindo, and now it looks like Rachel Mueller is going to do the same thing with her sustainability resilience, and they're just going to deny all this that I've showed here, that on the master plan, of all these culverts that, that look like, look like this, and just complete ignoring them. So the city should somehow give confidence to the council that, that they're even looking at the stormwater management plan. I don't, I really doubt that the planning department has anything to do with the stormwater management plan. It's called a Stormwater Management Plan of Greater Tidesville, it's a book. And it's pretty thorough, and there's times that I've, I've seen some people have come to be almost in tears in their eyes, they said, "The city's going to charge me, make me put in a culvert, replace a culvert." And I said, "No, you don't need to do that, look there in the stormwater master plan, it says it's the city's supposed to do it." And that was over a hundred thousand dollars. So obviously, you've got problems, we've got problems, we've got dams, dams, numerous dams are built in the city of Tidesville, the dams do not show what they flood. The one at the seniors there doesn't show what it floods, the one at Parkland Estates doesn't show what it floods, the one at Baker Subdivision that was in, it didn't ever show what it floods, no compensatory storage, violates the law that, the law is what? Water flows downhill, I think that would be a good thing to put in your, in your technical manual, water flows downhill, thank you.
Any other cards? I take a motion on nine A. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-three, stormwater technical manual ordinance, can't say it.
And amending definitions where needed, very good. I have a motion, Vice Mayor.
I second.
I have a second, roll call, vote on nine A.
Mayor, may I clarify, is the motion to approve as revised and distributed?
I would say yes, yes. Right, yes.
Thank you for allowing that. Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Ordinance five twenty twenty-three passes unanimously, city manager.
On to nine B, which is ordinance six twenty twenty-three, modifications to the risk management program definitions, payment of claims, claim settlements, and additional risk sections of the ordinance. City attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number six twenty twenty-three, in ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter two, article seven, risk management program, to clarify expenses to be paid from the self-insured loss fund, and to amend the threshold amount for settlement of claims by city manager or designate, by amending section two dash two twenty-nine definitions, section two dash two thirty-one expenses and costs to be approved and paid from fund, section two dash two thirty-five claim settlement authority, and section two dash two thirty-nine additional risk, providing for severability, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
The wording in the existing sections of the ordinance needed revised to bring consistency in the program and clarity for the practices used by the department, and payment of insurance carrier services and other similar vendors, the payment of claims and the claim settlements to third parties, and the payment of safety programs for the city. And our risk managers here, if you have any questions, Mark might be able to answer.
Any questions on six twenty twenty-three? Modification of risk management program definitions, I see none, I see none, call the cards, please?
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, PE, and when I worked for the city of Tidesville, P E and P L S, and I was at, I was paid the top of my salary, and I used to work with Joel McPherson, who was the risk manager, and I can say is that I don't believe he'd put up with what's going on here. He wouldn't put up with this, in other words, he knows I'm telling the truth, and you guys are living in a fantasy land, just waiting for the big suit to come. And you guys are living in a fantasy land, just waiting for the big suit to come. Because I'm, I've explained to you about all these crazy things you guys are doing, open and notorious dishonesty by our city manager and by some other people. And it's crazy. You guys are nuts. I can't believe it. I can't believe I'm living in this world and right here in my city is there, I gotta think about, you guys be thinking about your children, your grandchildren, what kind of legacy you're gonna leave with all these risks that you're doing and dishonesty? This is crazy. I think you guys are, you know, I said maybe you're minions or idiots or, or not idiots, but fools.
You gonna talk about this or you're gonna be done?
That, that, no, this is risk management.
No, 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 this is not.
This is risk management. This is risk management. You got a risk manager right here, he's gonna talk about this thing. And he should be, he should be, he should be stopping this, what's going on in City Hall. It's crazy. Your dishonesty, his dishonesty is really putting the liability on the city of Titusville big time. I mean, when you spray women and children and babies with sewer, buddy, you are in trouble. You should be in, you're in trouble. You have nonsense. And I don't, I don't, even though Mrs. Nelson said, "It's okay by somebody in FDEU pay." Well, you should know as a mother, if you don't go around spraying women and children and babies with, with piss and poop, you don't do it. And he, and it says it's okay for, he says it's okay to do it, but it's not right. It's not right. And what I think is somebody should be charged with this felony. And risk management should be considering what the heck is going on. Because if I were here and Joel McPherson was here, something would be done. This is nonsense, what you guys are doing. You don't know what you're doing. Absolutely. Now, I, I, I give Herman Cole a break, he's just come in here, so let's be gentle on him. But you guys who are right here, you're living in a tiptoeing through the tulips. You're crazy. So anyhow, I'm gonna let you go and let you go ahead and do what you want to, but the city of Titusville in big trouble. You guys are in big trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you really want to say thank you to me, but, okay. I always appreciate everyone's time. Um, any other comments, Vice Mayor?
Um, whenever you're ready.
Okay, sir, I'm ready for a motion, sir.
I'll make.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. Um, an additional card was.
Okay, that's fine, we'll take it.
Um, it does not specify if it was this item. It does say, um, Agenda Item 9. Oh, this is 9B.
You come on up.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, Joy Morgan.
9B, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Name and address for the record.
I'm Joy Morgan, and I live at 1 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. Earlier this evening, Nikki Day from Bryant Miller &amp; Olive made a presentation about public participation and what the limits should be for, within the state of Florida and, um, the city. And I'm proposing to the council that Mr. Johnston has overstepped his allocation of three topics, three minutes, not to exceed 10 minutes per council meeting. So I think that this meeting could move a little faster.
Absolutely.
If we held him to those specifications.
Absolutely, thank you. Was that 10, or 9B, or is that just a?
9B.
Okay, works for me. Works for me. Um, yeah, I'll just say, thank you. I'm allowed to say thank you to all the participants. All right, now I need a motion.
If I, if I may, Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 6-2023, Modification of Risk Management Program Definitions, Payment of Claims, Claim Settlement, and Additional Risk Sections of the Ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion for Vice Mayor, a second from Member Cole. We're good, right? Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Diesel?
Yes, motion passed unanimously. 9B is passed, we move on to first readings.
Uh, onto item 10A, which is ordinance number 7-2023, Specific Revisions to the Police Officer's Pension Plan and Establish a Share Plan to Provide Special Benefits to Police Officers. And this is your first reading, the City Attorney will read this, uh, ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 7-2023, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 15, Pensions and Retirement, Article 3, Police Officers and Firefighters Pension Plan of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Titusville, amending Division 5, Section 15-237, Supplemental Benefit Component for Special Benefits, Chapers 175 and 185, Share Accounts, to provide for a share plan for police officers, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
All right, thank you. I'm glad we're moving in that direction, I appreciate that. That is a first reading, there's no vote, no action. Counsel, any comments on that? Call the card.
I have a card.
Thank you very much. Moving on, City Manager.
Onto Old Business, this is 11A, Outdoor Storage in the DMZ, DMU zoning district. At the 13 December 2022 regular meeting, Mr. Honeycutt represented the property owners at 1012 South Hopkins, requested staff review the land development regulations pertaining to outdoor storage. Counsel did not support an advisability to prepare an ordinance and a change at that time. However, counsel did support Mr. Honeycutt's request to bring back additional information. At the 10 January 2023 regular meeting, counsel directed staff to bring back additional information and propose alternatives prior to making an ordinance change. Several alternatives with explanation of their pros and cons are part of your packet, and alternatives include no change, prohibit outdoor storage, reduce the distance from the residential property from 300 to 100 feet for outdoor storage, reduce the distance from the residential property from 300 to 100 feet for vehicle storage only, or other direction. Mr. Parrish is here to help guide you through this discussion.
Give us a opening line.
I'm just here to answer any questions and just ensure that you understand the alternatives that I pre, that I submitted to you. Um, as already described, I've suggested four, um, but there's obviously could be open-ended to any other kind of changes too that you might like to look and consider.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, first question, uh, if we change this, does this affect this one property and nothing else?
That depends on the change that you're making.
And, but it can affect more, uh, more property than just this property alone?
Yes, sir.
If we change the zone?
That's correct.
Is that, is that correct?
If you change the conditions of the use in that zoning district, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
So if we're tied to, uh, RV sales, as in such reuse, so to speak, I'm not sure if that's a correct term, but I think you got the idea. That would limit it to that property, if that was sold, that would, that would be the end of it.
I'm not sure I understand. Um, RV sales is a permitted use in that zoning district now?
If you said, if the ordinance said that when you're doing RV sales, you can also do RV storage, only if you're doing RV sales, then that would say, if that RV business closes up, that use goes away?
I think what we read last time was that, um, RV sales or vehicle sales has certain conditions and you can't have outdoor storage with it. And those are one of the conditions. And I think that was part of discussion last time, there was an idea of maybe combining them together in some way, but they're two different uses altogether.
Member Stokel?
Yep, um, I spent a lot of time thinking about this one just from our previous discussion. And a couple of things. One, Mayor, you had brought up, and that's one of the terms I was really thinking about, is I really feel like we're getting into spot zoning. Um, and that really concerns me. The second thing is, looking at the map, thank you for providing that, Brad, when we talk about, and Vice Mayor mentioned this, if we do something, does it affect everything in that zoning or district, the DMU? And you look at the map on 330, there's a lot of the downtown, um, mixed use. And then the other thing, and I think this got brought up when we were talking at our last meeting, I feel like, Brad, there was a spot where it said specifically not wanting to have outdoor storage. Because in my mind, the selling of RVs and the storage of RVs are two different things. One tells me there's movement there, and that's what I think about when I think of downtown. There's movement, there's people, vehicles are being moved, people are stopping in, maybe stopping to eat, versus storage, to me, is not typically in a downtown area. Um, that's, and I, I feel like this was probably written, and the fact that it did have it specifically saying, no outdoor storage without, unless like these certain criterias. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
Yes, so in the code, it says automobile vehicle sales is allowed inside this zoning district with limitations. Specifically, Section 29-98, Paragraph C, 1, B, says, shall have no outdoor storage other than vehicles for sale or rent, and all repairs must be in an enclosed structure with no bait, door openings located in the front face of the building. What that means is, the vehicles that are there on, if you have an RV dealership or some other kind of automobile dealership use on that property in the zoning district, there's certain limitations. Those vehicles are there for display as part of that use. This outdoor storage is a completely different type of use altogether. So as an RV dealership or any kind of automobile dealership, it's understood that you're gonna have a lot of vehicles out there on a lot for sale. Um, it's the renting out or leasing out spaces for someone to come in and say, "I'd like to store my vehicle on your property." That's an outdoor storage use, that would be something else. That's completely different. I think that's what this is probably trying to address.
Which is why I think that it was written that way in the first place, because there was a vision for the downtown area, whether it was like the midtown, the uptown, the downtown, like the DMU. And so I appreciate the chart you made that gave us those alternatives, pros and cons, and I'm leaning towards no change to the current code and us really focusing more so on, I think we're trying to revitalize our downtown, has been, um, the trajectory, at least since I've been on council for six years of us trying to. I just feel like this would be really treading on spot zoning and probably not the best decision, in my opinion.
As I did say, I'm concerned about spot zoning. Uh, I'm not convinced that this wouldn't work at this particular spot, but I think if we get into the rezoning for a spot, we get into spot zoning, is there another way to make that work with a, I don't know if it's even the appropriate term here, but a CUP or some exception like that or not?
Well, currently, outdoor storage in this sub-district is, has to go through a CUP process. So they have to meet these special conditions in there through the public hearing process in addition to our regular conditional use criteria.
Okay. Um, anything else from counsel? I think it's time to call the cards and hear what we hear.
Uh, yes, sir. Three cards, uh, the first Rodney Honeycutt.
I may be extending time here.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue here in Titusville. So, um, back here tonight to try to continue moving this forward for the owner, um, the, the zoning on this side is downtown mixed use and it's in the midtown area, and we're not changing that. Um, if, if in this zone, you, you desire to have outdoor storage, then you have to get a conditional use permit. And that's what my client met with the city, and, um, they thought everything was okay. So he came to me, we submitted an application, our application was accepted, and, um, then later we received a second letter that said there's a 300-foot setback, um, and that the area that we had, that would eliminate the storage area. And so, just to briefly, in case you didn't read it, in the midtown, downtown mixed use, it says, in this district, it is a heavier commercial fabric, larger lot uses, developments such as vehicle sales, auto repair, shops, some industrial uses. So it is, it's, it's not in the midtown, it's, I mean, it's not in the downtown or the uptown, it is in the, the midtown area that, that was developed for this, that's the specific use. And so uniquely, I think, to the midtown downtown area, in this area, the railroad track is on the west side. And the railroad track here is a 100-foot rightaway. Why is it 100-foot rightaway? That's wider than usual. If you notice, there's two tracks, there's not just one. This is an area that trains pass back and forth. It's not until you get up to South Street that it goes back to one lane and, and the rightaway is narrow. So it's wider. And also uniquely in this area, the railroad track is six or eight feet higher than the property. Um, that, that still don't change things, uh, if, as far as requirements, if a CUP was allowed, there still has to be, uh, a barrier all the way around it. I think it's eight feet tall to cover all this, which we would have to do. The, the area would be paved, the area would, and it would, uh, there would be a plan and, and whatever was there, um, would have to meet the code. What my client would like to do is to have the code changed for the fourth option, and that would be reduce the minimum distance from residential zoning from 300 feet to 100 for vehicle storage only. Not the other items on there, there, there are lots of other things that can be stored. Um.
Hold up, Rodney. Need two more minutes, Woody?
Yeah, I just wondered.
Well, yeah. Let's go two more minutes.
Okay.
We agree?
Yeah.
Two more minutes.
And, and so the other thing, tonight, all we're asking you to do is the advisability to make a code change. That would still have to come back to you. And if you do approve it, then my client has to submit for a conditional use permit, which has to come back. So it's, it's a long process to change this, and it still has to go before public hearings with neighbors notified, uh, that get a chance to speak. And so, um, that's what we're asking tonight, is just to go forward. This was the one, uh, the one option is for vehicle storage only with a 100-foot setback instead of a 300. And just remind you that if you're in a lot industrial zone and you have storage, you can be 75 feet in that code for some strange reason from residential.
Have you, um, and it may be premature, but have you spoken to any citizens yet? Hold on, you can stop the clock. Have you spoken to any citizens yet in the area?
No, I haven't. The owners here tonight, and Will speaking.
Okay.
He couldn't make it the last time or two, so.
Okay, um, Member Nelson?
Rodney, how far is it from where he wants to go to the closest house?
To the closest house, um, would probably be 125 or 40 feet.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? You were right, it was a minute you needed, not two. Okay, thank you, Rodney.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
David Parsons.
Hello, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Parsons, I'm the, we're the new owners of that property. We've had the business there for a few years. We purchased it from the previous owners. We are a family business, when I say family, it's me and my wife, and my sons are there now. Rodney more or less put everything I wanted to say, he just said it a lot better, a lot more effective, a lot more factual than I could.
He's like that.
Yeah, so I'm happy, anything else to say? That's it. Do you have any questions?
Again, did you, have you talked to any neighbors? Anybody aware what's going on?
Yes, we did talk to one that currently uses part of the property, and there's a huge oak. They, they're probably going to be fine with it. We're not going to move the fence or the business any closer to the property they currently use of ours. The fence is on the other side of it now, and we're going to leave it that way. But the people on the other side of them, we haven't had any contact with. We did make a few attempts to meet them, because part of our property goes behind them, but we, we weren't able to, uh, to reach.
Okay. Member Nelson?
If I remember right, that oak sort of like straddles the property a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I will tell you guys, the tree team would just go crazy over this oak.
Yeah, I can't interrupt, but I thought the same thing.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
A tree team or not, I would hope they wouldn't deal with a big old oak like that one around there.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, we have no plans to take it down. I don't know what our liability or what our options are on it, but we have no plans to, to take it down or include it inside the perimeter.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next card?
Uh, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, and, uh, there was some comments about Nikki Day said some things that, uh, maybe I'm, uh, talking more than I should. And she said that, uh, I should, I should seek, people should seek other methods like, uh, uh, emails and, and meeting you guys, and certainly I would love to do that. And that's why I'm speaking. So, uh, apparently, this young lady didn't catch my email that I sent to a number of people, because I'm offering anyone a hundred dollars. I'll offer you, young lady.
Hey, stop the clock, stop the clock. First of all, don't talk to anybody in the crowd. Secondly, we, we have a topic up here right now, you can, you can digress later, but not right now. We're talking about this issue here.
Well, I mean, you let her talk about, so, so I wanted to.
Talk about this or be done.
I want to cut it short.
Go.
I'm trying to cut it short. So in any words, I'm offering her a hundred fifty dollars if she can get any of you guys to meet with me.
About this. Go, we're not talking a hundred fifty dollars.
All right, that's all I wanted to say. I offered her a hundred fifty dollars. Now, and I think Rodney Honeycutt is doing a great job.
Thank you.
Think y'all listened to him. Thank you, bye. And you can thank me for going short.
Thank you. Uh, any other cards? I digress again and say, what's y'all's pleasure? I don't see any lights lit up and we can't just sit here all night. My first thought is, I, I'd like to do something to make this work, but I don't want to spot zone. If we have to do a CUP, yeah, even if they didn't want to rezone that. Um, I, and I don't know if we just table it and get more information. I, I don't know what you want to do with that, but we'll start with member Nelson.
Well, I'm sort of like, you know, if, if commercial industrial is allowed in that area, then maybe this is more appropriate. With a CUP. And I'm not sure how that would.
I didn't even know if it would work, but I just thought shit out there.
Oh, yeah.
Earlier, yeah, I don't know.
So, I mean, I'm willing to look at, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote for it. Sorry, wherever I think, but I, I would like to look at it and see what it, that would look like.
And just to play off of that, what I said earlier, I don't look at that area and feel that this is out of place.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a visual that says this doesn't fit. I, I've had some issues, we've had some issues late into the night that I didn't think certain things fit. I don't think the visual gives me this doesn't fit. Uh, I am concerned, if there is a concern when you ask the question, how close is it to the, the nearest house? The nearest home, I worry about those people. Uh, the railroad tracks coming up, however high they come up, but you noted that. Uh, I think that gives a bit of a buffer. So I, I'd like to make it work. I don't want to spot zone anything because that means we're not just dealing with this. We're dealing with everything that comes along after it. So I'd like, is, is there a CUP that can work? Can we make it work? Uh, I'm asking. And, and if we can't make it work, then I want to know why it didn't work.
You're asking staff how we can make it work?
Well, yeah, I guess that's it because I said CUP when we first started this discussion. Man, I didn't know if that was appropriate or even plausible.
It's currently required right now, Rodney has already explained that's what started this process. They had to go through this and that's when it was discovered, this special condition in there. I mean, that, that sounds like you want to continue to have that process.
I'd like to continue to try to make it work and I don't, I, I'm not the guy that has all those answers. Member Stokel.
I, I feel like the only way to make it work from the CUP would be to reduce the requirement. I think the sticking point is they have to be three hundred feet from residential. And I think that is what we need to decide. I'm, I'm leaning towards, I think, kind of vice mayor last time. It's, I, I kind of do feel like it's needed. Um, so I'm kind, I'm more on the no change on the current code and leave it as is. If they can meet the requirement of the current CUP, okay. If they can't, I kind of like how the code is written. The alternative, if you guys are wanting to try to make it work, would be to reduce that three hundred feet to a hundred feet. And then they should be able to, but then they would be much closer to the residential. My others, I might, I think the other thing that's getting me is I, I don't know if it fits with the vision I'm having for the area. And I'm kind of leaning more towards the way that the code is currently written. Um, so that's where you're seeing me kind of not, not leaning in that direction.
And I don't disagree with that, especially when you talk about the vision that you have for it. But I think if I was driving down the street and I, you know, saw what they were seeing, I could say, oh, that, yeah, that, that's okay. But I also see that we, you know, want to get them closer to the houses. I, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing both sides here. I'm just trying to find a win-win and I don't know that I'm, I'm finding a win-win, which is why I'm throwing things out like CUP and what can staff do? I don't have the answer. I, and I get that we have some concerns about it, you know, uh, being too close to houses and that. I get that. I mean, if I'm living there, I'm certainly thinking about that. But I, I'm trying to get a better idea of what it's going to look like in the end. Um, and I don't know that I have that. But I do think the visual right now is that it's, I'm not looking at that and saying, well, this just doesn't fit. I don't see that right now. Uh, member Nelson.
Well, I'm sort of looking at, like Rodney said, these, um, the setback, not the setback, but it'd have to be seventy-five feet from a residential area if it was industrial. And so I'm like, okay, um, so this is a hundred, which was.
Maybe I'm confused on that. And Brad, maybe you can help me with that with looking at the map. I'm not, do we have a map that shows where industrial is within the downtown midtown area? Because that would determine my, my decision as well. Is, is it, you know, a good chunk of the space? Is it like one's area of it? I, that's what I don't know.
That's, that's information we can provide to you.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I just want to point out one thing about, like, I've already mentioned the last time, the difference between this mixed use zoning district versus the light industrial M1 zoning district. When we look at large districts and putting them in different places, there, we're looking at the appropriateness of that zoning district and all what it's involved in it. That's different from the mixed use zoning district, which has these special performance standards. The other thing too, industrial, we typically try to keep that away from residential. So anytime we get a request for rezoning property, that's going to be adjacent to residential. I'm sorry, that's industrial, or an industrial request next to a residential, we typically try to avoid that because that's not compatible typically.
But Brad, isn't that downtown mixed use include commercial, light, industrial?
Rodney's correct. If you take a look at page three thirty-seven of your packet, I included three thirty-seven, three thirty-six, a description of the different sub-districts within this DMU downtown, this, uh, mixed use district. And the midtown one is more suburban, does include some limited industrial uses and more vehicular based type uses compared to the downtown one and the others at, uh, some districts, so yes.
And, and I could see what you're saying, saying, Sarah, because I'm thinking right now, my vision for that area would, would be in, compatible with what Rodney suggested. But twenty years from now, it's, you know.
I know.
It's not going to look the same.
My other thing, and Mayor, is it okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the maps.
With meeting with staff and Brad, maybe you can clarify this. I think when we were having our discussion specifically with the downtown area, I think you alluded to this. There's certain requirements, like you can have this, but you're looking at other areas to make sure it's next to a certain type of zoning. There's a lot more detail, I think, that goes into this area versus the rest of the city to make sure you're not having too much of one type of thing. I feel like there was a lot of thought put into certain rules regarding the downtown area that there was a vision prior.
That's correct. So a large, single-use zoning district is going to have, you're looking at the packets of uses that are allowed. Not typically the conditions or anything, typically you won't see that, sometimes you will. But the mixed use zoning district has typically, you'll see all these mixes of uses. How do we make them all work? Well, here are all the performance standards, the conditions are part of that. So it's, it's a different animal, if you will, compared to the other standard, single-use districts that we have.
Number Cole.
You know, I would like to also see this work and, you know, when, when Rodney describes it, he has a way of romanticizing it and making it sound really good. I, I really don't agree with, you know, spot zoning. So I, I would like to see it done, but I wouldn't like to see it done if it has to be done because of spot zoning.
Yeah, I think that's what Rodney's saying, this is going to happen. Uh, Rodney, can you come up real quick? Say again, you, you had given us a little scenario, no clock. You had given us a little scenario about, uh, can y'all do this? And then you're still going to have to see it again and again or whatever, so tell me that again.
Well, I think you're asking, we're not asking to change the zoning. The zoning is downtown mixed use and it's in the midtown area. There is a requirement for a CUP. And what we're asking is that one of the, one of the um, conditions of the CUP is that outdoor storage have a separation of three hundred feet um, from any residential zone property. And so we're asking that to be changed to one hundred. So the zoning wouldn't be changed, it would, it wouldn't be a spot zoning. It would be a conditional use permit. And there has to be a public hearing and notices to neighbors to come back before P and Z and you, before we could even do it, if the code is changed.
All right, but first you're saying we don't have to change the code.
You don't, you don't have to change the zoning.
The zoning, the zoning, okay, that's right.
The zoning is good. It's, it's that, it, and it requires a CUP for outdoor storage, that's good. For, we're asking that for vehicle uh, storage only, that the separation distance for uh, residential zone property is one hundred feet instead of three hundred.
What would, uh, what would that look like? Or is it possible for us to put that in the form of a motion? I mean, obviously there's a lot there, but um, member, Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes, uh, if, if you went to that change of a hundred feet, would that be isolated to that area only? Or how would that affect the rest of the downtown area?
Again, depends on your motion. So if you're, specifically if you're going with option four, I guess, and just reduce that setback from three hundred to one hundred feet, it'll apply to every property.
It'd apply to every property all the way down, is that correct?
Just in that sub-district?
Just there.
If that's all you're going to make that one change?
Right there.
Yeah, that would want to use outdoor storage.
Okay.
And that sub-district basically goes, correct me Brad if I'm wrong, from South Street to um, south of the Nissan, I think the next street south of Nissan, I believe might be Grace.
I want to, yes, Grace, Grace to south, yeah.
So I go back to, is there a way to put his uh, explanation into a motion? Help us with that. I mean, because either way, what I'm getting at is we don't need, we know where we're at. We need to say, are we going to go forward or we not? And we'll just take our votes and go from there. Uh, member Nelson.
Can we just do advisability? Because Brad's going to have to come back with whatever.
This is, this is, you're, you're giving us direction. You're, if you just make a motion, that's advisability for us to go forward and draft an ordinance.
Do you need a, do you need a motion? I mean.
Yes, yes ma'am, I need some direction.
Right, because he wants some direction in preparation of an ordinance of what it is you're looking for as a council. What is he going to put in that ordinance?
He reads minds.
If I hear you guys correctly, and I think we're not, we're split on this. So I'm here that I feel like some of you want option four. Um, I'm leaning towards option one, do nothing. And then there's also a third thing that's not up here is advisability to come back with a map that shows those other industrial areas before making a decision. So I think those are our options.
I'm for, if we're, we're not for making it work right now, which again, it doesn't sound like it has to work right now. It sounds like we just have to move forward. I'm for whatever we can do to give it, to not kill it. I, I mean, that's maybe not the right way to say it, but um, I'd like to, if we get more information, um, if, if we get a more, better understanding, uh, but I don't see any reason to no change. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
When, and you said go down to, it runs all the way north to South Street?
Yes, sir. Take a look at page three thirty of your packet. That area that's in like a beige color, it's titled, it's got a label there of midtown. Uh, so it runs, the north boundary of the midtown district is from South Street and goes all the way down to uh, the split where Gray Street.
That hundred feet will, will affect properties from South Street south.
Correct.
That is correct.
Correct.
Uh, member Nelson.
So my thought is that we ask Brad to bring back something on option four plus the map so that we see the industrial areas at the same time.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a step in the right direction to, to at least see it. Doesn't mean you have to vote that way, guys, it's just, it's an option. Now I do.
Joel, can you say that again, please, just so I can make sure I understood? I know, I know.
What I was saying was let Brad bring back a proposed ordinance on option four. But Sarah had asked about a map that we consider that map. And rather than having Brad come back with a map and then maybe come back with an ordinance, we do it all at one time. That was just my thought.
If you want to put that in a motion, we can find out where we're at. I mean, we're, we're going back and forth here. If you put it in a motion, then we'll find out if we got a second and we'll find out if we got anything at all.
Okay, so we'll make that a motion.
Brad, did you get that as a motion?
I understand the first, the motion, I haven't heard a second yet, but I want to clarify.
I'm just seeing if you understand it.
Okay, yeah, so, and come back to you with an ordinance, which takes time, so it won't come back at your next meeting. So then we'll have to advertise it and then it'll come to you the first time before you, as a first reading. At that time, you'll see that map. Is that the motion or do you want to see this map beforehand?
I think a map's important.
Well, let me, let me ask you, the map you could bring back next time, correct?
Yes, we can do that.
That would be easier, easier to do it. So can we look at the map next time and from there? Go forward.
In other words, go forward with a motion to draft an ordinance?
Right.
We can do that, yeah.
So you could table this same discussion of advisability to your next meeting, including direction that staff bring you back a map.
Oh, thank you, Richard.
I think that may be what we needed.
Can I move to table this to the next meeting and you bring back, bring us back a map?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
No.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Passes three to two and we'll move forward and nothing's passed as far as that program. We're just going to hear more. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. City manager.
Onto new business, this is Tranquility Shores, formerly Antigua Bay, Phase Two Sketch Plat. On January, eighteen January twenty twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to approve the sketch plat with the deletion of any mention of building pad minimum size requirements. The approval was seven zero. Tranquility Shores, Phase Two, is a proposed one hundred and two lot, single-family subdivision on approximately thirty-nine point three seven four acres, located north of State Road four oh five and east of South Washington. This is the second phase of the overall project, which consists of three hundred and forty-five acres. Uh, Mr. Parrish will run you through the requirements for a sketch plat and answer any questions which we have.
So as you know, this is Phase Two of tract five of the Tranquility Development Agreement. It's that three hundred and fifty plus or forty plus acre property at the um, south or northeast corner of Columbia in US One. It's a very large development. So this is just a sketch plat. This is the first stage that we have to get council's approval of this um, application in order to go, for the applicant to be able to go forward to the next step, which is a preliminary plat slash site plan, engineering drawings to us, which is an administrative process. You'll see this once again at the final plat where you will accept it and any uh, utilities or roadways that would be dedicated to the city for maintenance. The sketch plat, we found it to meet all the criteria for the sketch plat requirements of the code. So that, um, unless you have any questions, um, I won't address that. But I do want to point out one thing on page three forty-three of your packet. You will see the first cover sheet. And just so you know, there's a lot more information here than what we typically would, would we ask for, for a sketch plat. But we did review everything um, and provided comments to the applicant just so, for they have, so they were prepared for the preliminary plats and slash site, site plan stage. So on that page, on that sheet, uh, sheet, page three forty-three of your packet, that's the cover sheet of the entire plan. There's an area there on the uh, right side of the document that says lot requirements and setback requirements and maximum height. And then there are two columns there called required and proposed. So this Planning and Zoning Commission um, looked at that and decided to approve it with the recommendation that the standards proposed here should be these standards. So uh, Mr. Honeycutt has provided to me a uh, a. a, uh, a revision to this sheet, um, that removes those columns and those labels that says required versus a proposed, so there's no confusion, and basically has just identified these standards that are in here as the standards for this sketch plat. So there won't be any confusion later on when they submit to us the site plan.
And do the standards meet the code?
Yes, they're consistent, the standards that are, were proposed here in the sketch plat are the same that are, that were given to me by Mr. Honeycutt, and they are consistent with the code.
All right, member Stokel?
Yep. Um, I'm assuming that they were just probably doing, most of them are the same, some of them exceed it, so they probably were just trying to say, hey, we're not doing the required, the minimum, we're going a little bit above that, and so they probably were just, I, I would assume, that's what they were probably trying to communicate, but for the sake of our purposes, it sounds like Rodney already changed it, so.
One other thing I just wanna mention, the commission also, the planning commission also recommended removing any reference to a minimum building pad, and that has been removed out of here, this latest sheet that I have from Mr. Honeycutt.
Okay.
We have no objection to that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other comments from the council, questions? All right, call the cards?
Uh, yes, sir, three cards, the first Rodney Honeycutt.
Still Rodney Honeycutt at thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue. Um, good evening. Uh, tonight, we're here for approval of Phase Two Sketch Plat for Tranquility, and, um, staff pretty, pretty well went over everything. Uh, the reason at the Planning and Zoning Board, it was discussed about the, uh, setback and the, and the building size of the commission, is that staff brought it up to, to point it out to P and Z that, that, um, the items that are presented in the sketch plat will be standards and they have to be met, and the only way they could not be met was to come back and revise the sketch plat. And so, um, we reviewed it during the meeting and said the only thing we wanted to remove was the, uh, minimum pad size, and so they voted to remove that and leave the, the balance the same, and then staff asked us to change it from required and proposed to just show the standards. And so that's what we did, and that's what Brad was talking about tonight. Um, and so there, and so we did omit the thing that, uh, P and Z mentioned about the minimum pad size, that's not on there anymore. So it's about a hundred and two lots, I think it is a hundred and two lots on forty acres, uh, it's the next phase, it's just behind the waterfront lots, it's great, I know you guys are happy to see it. Um, one concern that, um, that we have is that, um, there's a lot of information in the sketch plat that is in addition to what's inside Phase Two, and that is so that we can explain, for instance, um, the, uh, sketch plat for Phase Two includes the, um, public access road, uh, Split median road that goes to US one, and so, um, everything that, that, um, and so we are, we are, um, bisecting an area in the currently approved master plan and development agreement that's open space, and that's approved in there, but we show the master plan in there, and so we are, we have been in quite a while meeting with staff to modify that, and so we don't want to have to come back and change the sketch plat if we modify what we show in there. So we're asking tonight, if you're so kind, is to make a motion to approve Phase Two Sketch Plat, that you accept, in that motion, you say, any information outside of the Phase Two Sketch Plat boundary and that access roads to US one is for informational purposes only and not binding upon the Phase Two Sketch Plat. That's just a safety precaution, so that we don't have to come back later and go back through the sketch plat. Can I have a little more, more time?
Yeah, um, one more minute?
Yeah, that'll do it. And so that's just a precautionary measure, so we don't have to do that. So I'm gonna pass that language out to you and to staff, so you can take a look at it while, while the other speakers are up here to make sure that everybody agrees with that, but that would be our request, if you're so kind, to make a motion.
Is this the first time that, this is, um?
I'll find out. It sounds like it didn't, but it also sounds like they're just trying to keep him coming here twice, we've done this to him all the time, do not come back. We're wasting our time. If this is a technical.
Can I ask a question of Rodney?
You said that?
Mayor, can I clarify a question with Rodney about that?
Before you do that, with, with Rodney, um, staff, city attorney, city manager, Brad, we okay with this addendum?
So just so I understand, what you're saying is the illustration of where the layout of the road, the spine road from Phase Two going out to, um, um, US one and connecting, or I, I guess rather the road that is connecting from Phase Two to the spine road itself within the development. That configuration here is part of the sketch plat, but everything outside of that is still up relative, basically, because we're still trying to follow with the, with the master plan. So don't use what's the information you show right outside that boundary.
Yeah, don't bind us to the area outside either the road or the Phase Two Sketch Plat, that's for informational purpose, so you could understand what we're doing, but we were, there was a concern that, jeez, we don't have to come back and say, whoops, they amended the development agreement, but they didn't amend the sketch plat, we have to go back and do that, so.
We don't have any concern with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's not amending the master plan.
So, you said it would prevent him from coming back on, make sure I understand, well, adding that language, what does that have to do with you coming back?
It would, it would keep us from having to come back and revise Phase Two Sketch Plat again, that's what we're talking about tonight, because we changed information outside of the Phase Two Sketch Plat due to a later development agreement amendment or, or some other reason.
Rodney, what would be the example of that?
Uh, it would be what we're talking about for Development Agreement Amendment Four.
So, I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the sheets and seeing, trying to see if there's something that's located outside of the boundaries of the spine road that you have identified on the sketch plat that you didn't necessarily want to, but you just wanna make sure.
If you, if you look at the sheet that shows, and I, I think it's C seven, but I can't remember for sure, that shows where the spine road bisects, um, eleven A.
Rodney, what page number are you on?
He says C seven.
I think it's C seven, but I'm not sure.
Three forty-nine of our packet.
Okay.
If that's it.
Brad will confirm.
It's just the language when you say that it, any information that's outside of the Phase Two Sketch Plat, well, if we're not approving, we shouldn't be approving something that's outside of the sketch plat, that's why I was confused.
Right, but it's on the plans that are in that packet.
Right, so the boundaries of the plat itself is what's identified on the sketch plat, but in order to show where it's gonna be located, they did show additional information that's outside the actual boundaries of what's being platted.
Right, so it's clear we're not approving anything that's outside of the sketch plat boundaries, and you're saying this language is clarifying that?
That's what, that's exactly right.
We show it.
And it would, and I would ask for it to be in the motion, so there's no question about it.
Yeah, as long as we're clear that we're only approving what is within the sketch Phase Two Sketch Plat.
Page three forty-nine, yes, sheet C seven kind of illustrates that, you'll see an area there, I believe, highlighted in green, and it looks like what's the original per, master plan, a open space or preservation area, but that's not actually part of the boundaries of what's being subdivided, part of the sketch plat.
That's exactly right.
So I, I think I follow what Mr. Honeycutt's saying.
As long as it's clearly shown that that's not part of the sketch plat on the.
Okay, I'm assuming that means staff's okay. Uh, member Stokel?
Yeah, I think that was my question. I, I, I've talked to Tranquility Bay, the developers, quite a few times, and I think as they're developing this, what they're trying to do is prevent from having to come back, because it's hard to know, once you start, like, where you might need to move a road, or this came up, and I don't like having you guys come back, I think you guys know the vision when council voted to approve it, um, so anything we can do to eliminate the back and forth, I'm in favor of. My question, I think Brad clarified it was, I just was confused as to what, I guess, was included as part of the sketch plat Phase Two versus what wasn't. Um, so that clarified it for me, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Well, you, you raised a good point, and it wasn't in the agenda, but it is quasi-judicial. So I just wanna raise that point, that if there is any discussions you had, ex parte, that you need to disclose for the record, and that would be appropriate.
I've had none.
I did not have any on this particular agenda item, I have in the past, like, I've gone out to see the site.
But with regard to this agenda item?
No, 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 no.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the motion.
Any other questions? Yeah, any other cards?
Uh, yes, sir, two more cards, Gary Allen, excuse me, Gary Allen Senior.
I think it's good. Next card?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered professional engineer, uh, been since nineteen seventy-six, and I've been in engineering for all the time I've been here.
Hold up one second, stop clock. Um, I need a motion to go past ten thirty.
Oh.
Vice Mayor, um, how, to eleven?
Uh, we need to extend our time.
To eleven, let's say eleven.
Eleven?
Let's say eleven, we may go longer, but let's hope not. All right.
Till, uh.
I have a motion to go to eleven, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all of the fairies say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, go ahead, thank you, start clock.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, uh, notice what we just, just happened here is that, uh, uh, we had eleven, eleven A and twelve A, both by engineer Mr. Honeycutt, and so he was hired by two different people, Mr. Honeycutt as an engineer, I'm an engineer too, I've done at least a dozen subdivisions here in Titusville and over a dozen site plans and some of the, anyhow, uh, is that, see how people can trust other engineers? So what city could do is they could hire an engineer, just like these guys did, and hire engineers and oppose Stan Johnston, cause y'all don't like me. Absolutely, I mean, you just don't believe me, you don't trust me or anything like that, it seems like, because I'm, I'm reporting to you all these, so all you have to do to get rid of me is to get a, hire an engineer to disagree with me, that's all you have to do. It's real simple, real simple, sign an engineer, there's thousands of them. Just hire an engineer that says, Stan Johnston, he's not telling the truth. That's all you have to do. So anyhow, that's all, and I'll pass on anything else.
Thank you. Uh, any other cards? All right, uh, member Cole?
I would like to make a motion.
Oh, wait.
No, not ready.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Make a motion to accept this and any information outside of Phase Two Sketch Plat boundary and the access road from Phase Two to US Highway one right away is for informational purposes only and is not binding upon the Phase Two Sketch Plat as submitted.
Second.
Could we clarify that is, that's our language, but you're also, the motion is to approve the Tranquility Shore Sketch Plat as was revised at tonight's meeting?
What he said.
Yeah, come on, member Cole. Okay, we got a motion from member Cole, and I have a second from member Nelson, roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you guys very much. Let's rock. All right, city manager?
Uh, your petitions and requests again, sir?
Well, there couldn't be any, no, sorry. Uh, any petitions or requests out there that haven't spoken yet? I see none. All right, uh, mayor and council reports? We need to do that.
May I say one thing?
Yes, absolutely. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Johnston, I warned you one time this, since I've been up here, you don't tell no one in this, in this city or anywhere else that I don't like you, okay? Okay, so, no more discussion that you like.
I, I'm not even gonna go there. All right, um, all right, let's go with the mayor report, I'll go first, I got a couple of things. One is, um, I was pleased to be at the Martin Luther King service at St. James. Uh, I was really pleased to get to, uh, meet the pastor, Roy Jones, Dr. Roy Jones, um, I'm gonna do lunch with him very soon. Then I walked across the street and I spoke at the MLK celebration in Campbell Park. Um, I hear over and over that we're going to, uh, um, go back to the parade next year. I said to them, I said, whatever I need to do to help with that, I wanna do that, the parade is just a different thing. Um, I, I did see Stan Johnston running around saying he was late to somewhere, but I didn't really clarify where that was to. Um, Thursday, well, was it Thursday night, the Indian River, uh, the Indian River Lagoon? Uh, Anna, you were there in the back, I guess, I didn't, okay, I was behind the stage. Uh, Indian River Lagoon Coalition Presentation at THS Auditorium, I thought the speakers were amazing, and I was really pleased to see him use Tidesville High School's auditorium, it was well-used, and, um, when I got introduced, I did have one person stand up and clap for me. Stan, Stan did that. Um, and now I, I, help me out with, uh, what I need to do with the, um, with, uh, Mr. Mount, is this where I do that? All right, uh, council, I need you, as a matter of fact, Mr. Mount, come up for me. You've only sat there four hours, five hours, I apologize for that. I'm sitting there looking intermittently thinking, well, should we bring him up now, I was kind of in the middle of a.
He doesn't have anything else to do.
He's gotta get up and go to work.
Don Mount, six oh five South Palm.
Could you simply explain, kinda like you did to us in the meeting yesterday, what you've got there, so I can move him forward, and if not, I can read it from what you wrote me? No, I can do it. All right, hold on.
Um, I'm, I'm, there's legislation that's being put together to have a local bill to allow the, the reduction in size for restaurants in order to, um, be able to, to serve alcohol and create, um, a better atmosphere or increase capabilities for local entrepreneurs that are doing these things to, um, serve the community.
Very well, and, um, he communicated with me in this way, I'm gonna go ahead and go that way and tell me if I'm wrong, but in twenty twenty-two, three local bills were filed for the city of Orlando, city of Apopkin, city of Edgewood. All three bills changed the restaurant liquor special food service license requirements and lowered the threshold from twenty-five hundred square feet to eighteen hundred square feet, and the number of seating from one fifty to eighty. I really liked his point here, when he said some of the older buildings in our city require too much renovation and building permits, et cetera, to get the current requirements. Uh, with that said, um, can you move forward with where we go with this and, uh, state legislature, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what I need for the council to do quite simply is, I think it's a wonderful idea, uh, I, I am very much for it, but I need to have, uh, for me to be able to communicate with the state legislature or anybody on this, quite honestly, uh, I can have, and represent the city of Titusville, I need to get a vote from the council that says, yes, we're for this, and then I can communicate where need be, but we're primarily thinking with the state legislature to, uh, support this, uh, this bill or, or procedure.
And any letters or anything like that that may be required to be drafted as a result of this bill is, so, so basically, the mayor will become your front person with the state representative that Mr. Mount's working with and representing the city and city council on this.
And I would assume that I wouldn't even be calling anybody on the phone if I didn't have the support of the council and saying that, you know, so that, it just clears everything up, and that's what the poor guy sat there for five and a half hours for, so. Uh, with that, I have an order, we'll see what we've got, member Cole?
Uh, I move that, uh, we authorize Mayor Diesel to go forward with the legislature for this bill.
I have a, a motion from member Cole. I have a motion from member Cole. We're not done yet. I have a motion from member Cole, I need a second.
You may have a second, and one of the reasons, I've talked to Don about it, one of the reasons I would support it is we have the old downtown area, and I'm sure that some of those businesses, some of those are, are not going to be able to meet our current requirements.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's why I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's the state requirements.
Yeah, they're state requirements in order to get, yeah, the state licensure.
And this bill would, would reduce the requirements and, and help our community, as it's helped the other three communities that, that have already been done in the last two years.
Exactly, and that's, that's why I'm only.
It's the support of the city.
And quite honestly, I'm simply being, uh, if I can get the support, which I think we'll get. And quite honestly, I'm simply being, if I can get the support, which I think we'll get, I'm simply supporting the initiative in whatever way we can do that. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Do we have cards? I don't know if you could get up here for a card that quick.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnston had submitted cards.
Just in case? Oh, okay, on anything. All right, so anyway, call card. Go ahead, have, sit down right there, please. Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, Member Stokoe.
Just to clarify, so right now, the state law is it has to be a hundred capacity and twenty-five hundred square feet to.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty capacity?
Twenty-five hundred square feet.
To have a restaurant that serves alcohol or to sell alcohol?
To have a restaurant.
To have a restaurant. And so the local bill would be to lower that for restaurants only? To be able to go down to eighteen hundred feet and eighty people capacity, correct?
And that is to sell alcohol, liquor, what?
Yes.
Okay.
To get a liquor license, is that what it's about?
Yes.
Okay.
And realize, and I think you do, that's not our call. We're simply supporting it.
Right. I didn't know that was the state rule, quite honestly, so. And I think that they could do beer, but the liquor is the differentiating factor. Okay.
Okay, I have a motion.
We also needed the boundaries of, you know, the city. That Brad was.
Yeah, we'll provide that. It's, it's.
Okay, I have enough right now. All right, let's move forward. I have a motion, I have a second, I have called cards. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. And again, I, I feel terribly you had to sit there that long. So you feel, you feel better about us now, don't you? Those poor guys. All right, so with that, yes, let's go, let's start with Member Cole and go this way. Anything you have to say?
Yes, on last Tuesday night at the Cocoa Library, we had a very successful seminar recognizing the Day of Racial Healing. And what I am proposing to the council is that I need authorization for you to present a proclamation to Mr. Bill Gary proclaiming January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three as a day of racial healing and to do this at our five P M. Special Recognition and Presentation Meeting on the twenty-eighth of February.
It'll be five thirty. Now, now, if you want to go to your next meeting, which is February fourteenth, we can put it on your regular agenda under Special Recognition and Presentations. But if you want to wait till the presentations meeting, that's the second meeting in February.
Okay, Kim, the second meeting in.
Do you want to go first meeting?
I would like to do it as soon as possible.
Okay, so then the motion will be to authorize the issuance of a proclamation before council and staff will create an agenda item for that at your six thirty meeting.
At the six thirty meeting, okay.
On, because you have CRA.
Right, okay, got you.
So we'll just go to the first part of the meeting?
I'm good with that, yes, and, okay.
Okay, I have that motion.
Second.
I have a second for me to be able to present that proclamation to a day of racial.
It's a day of racial.
Day of racial healing. All those in favor, say yes. Yeah, he's going to be fourth though. Did you know we were doing that? All right, come on up. Let's go. But you have a card. All right, let me back, okay, all those in favor, say, thank you, Member Stokoe. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries. Anything else? Member Nelson?
I got to go out and see the new Vulcan rocket.
Oh, good for you.
And that was really cool.
That was cool.
Huge, huge. And I'm, I'm like, add this, you know, I don't like Facebook.
Well, that's kind of.
You know?
That's, yeah.
But, and I don't read it, which is sort of sad, but people send me things.
They did that on his coach, too.
Yeah, I know. So I am just going to say, somebody put, somebody put out there that Councilmember Nelson wants to get rid of all the tomatoes in the backyard.
Oh, I saw that.
Nathan Schlescher, I think it was, put out that I was trying to get rid of the tomato plants in the backyard. And for those people out there who are up at quarter to eleven, no, I don't want to get rid of the tomato plants. I have tomato plants in the backyard. So that was taken out of context, and that's all I'm going to say.
Well said, well said. Vice Mayor.
I spent five days on the beach.
That's right.
Down in the Dominican Republic, and it was wonderful. And I also went, before I left, I, in attendance also with Member Nelson, we went to the legislative briefing down at, and the city manager's down in Viera. And I was also with the mayor in the background. We didn't, we didn't break the law. We didn't do anything wrong. We, he, I knew he was there, but he didn't know that I was there. And, but those are the things, and the meeting was interesting.
Very interesting.
Very interesting. So that's all I, I did this week, so I'm ready to go back to work and make things happen.
Well, I've got plans for you.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, you may. Hold on, Member Stokoe. Hold on, hold on.
And I will say, I found an article on a new Corvette that I sent to Mr. Robinson. Corvette goes zero to sixty in two point five seconds. I was saying he needs a new ride. It's a hybrid.
All right, Member Stokoe.
Then I can have your truck, Vice Mayor.
It is a nice truck.
Yep. I just wanted to let you guys know that our new state rep, Chase Tremont, if you haven't met him, I would highly encourage you to reach out to him. He represents the north end of Titusville and Port Orange, some of Volusia. But he reached out to me with what I think is good news, basically saying that it's his first time in, but he already has relationships built with the Speaker of the House that's representing Volusia and said basically to please keep him informed of any state appropriation dollars we would be seeking. The deadline, he said, these next two years are crucial where he has this relationship. February fourteenth is the deadline, which is kind of a quick turnaround. So if we can't get it in this time, I would say that I would really like us to submit something next year. Potentially, I don't know enough about what the monies could be used for, but I'm thinking like our unfunded list, when we go through the budget process, we always have that list of millions of dollars to see where we can kind of request money from that, for that. He said infrastructure projects, anything doing with trying to reduce flooding, flood zone areas. I'm thinking some of the Public Works Department. So if you have anything, or if we just direct city manager as you see things, if we can submit that to try to get that money, I feel like now, I want to strike while the iron is hot because I don't know when we would have such this close relationship to potentially get more. I also did mention to him the widening of four oh five, which has been in the works to see potentially about getting that forward, and I think we are moving forward on that already, so that's all I have.
All right, I'll simply say I never met him, so. That's what they look to say. Say again? That's right. That's right. We got, we got the same pins, everybody. City manager.
To follow along with Member Stokoe, the four oh five project, I know Mr. Robinson, you said on the TPO, lots of discussion about that and moving it up. It is moved up. Our county commissioner is working to help keep that project moving. It was originally out in the twenty thirty-two area, and it's down into at least the twenty twenty-six, and we're trying to get it.
Wow, that's good.
Even further moved up because as, as we are growing, that will be a definite need. The city applied for and was awarded five projects at one point six million dollars for water quality. So it's kind of a follow along to Dr. Jacoby's discussion. And Mayor, at the Government Affairs Meeting at the Chamber of Commerce that we attended,
Yes.
I just want to remind council that we ran into one of the space perspectives. I guess she's a manager.
Yes.
She just wanted to pass along to council that they're moving forward. They have about a hundred employees now, full time on the ground. And as has been previously mentioned, they are having challenges with finding their workers housing.
Everybody is.
So with that, I put some dates down for some upcoming things for your consideration. The big thing is February fourth. The following week after that, February tenth, we will begin construction on the downstairs area and the bathroom. We have to dig that hallway completely up and replace some piping that's broken right now. So that'll be out probably at least to the contractor says to the fifteenth. So we may have a, either move our council meeting on the fourteenth or we're going to get some temporary restrooms here anyway, so. Not the date, the location.
Just got to deal with it, sir. I ain't going there. I'm not going there. Go ahead. Continue on, sir.
That's it. Subject to your questions. That completes my report.
I would add that from my calendar, and I know it's your calendar, at this the twenty-sixth at two P M., we have the TPD Promotion Swearing Ceremony. Six P M., we have the Titusville Chamber Installation Banquet. And then, a little different this year, make sure it's on here.
It's on Sunday this year.
On the twenty-ninth, at one P M., I give the welcome at the Astronaut Memorial Ceremony. It's always been on Saturday. And I'll just leave it at that. It's on Sunday at one.
I think that's to accommodate some, some guests.
It is, it is. We'll see how that works out. I mean, I think it'll be fine. I think it'll be about the same people, same numbers, but. Well, yeah, I will just leave it at that. Yeah, one o'clock on Sunday. Oh, wow, okay then. With that, we want to make it to eleven o'clock or no? Yeah, let's make it. Meeting adjourned.